Why don't we get started? We'll call the meeting to order. And, uh, welcome to the August meeting of Common Council. Quite a few changes this month. So I want to appreciate everybody from the public and our staff who have been quite flexible and accommodating. For those of you who are watching online, you'll notice that, uh, everybody in the meeting is wearing masks. That is due to the CDC's recommendations based on the rate of transmission, especially driven by the Delta variant of COVID-19. Um, because of that, we've also adjusted our, uh, meeting, uh, protocols. So, uh, we do have social distancing for members of the public here in the building, and we are asking folks to come through in a staggered fashion. So this will be the first meeting of its kind in the city's history. We appreciate everybody's patience as we, uh, um, try to make this work. Uh, what that'll mean is, uh, a bit of a change from the agenda that you see online. Uh, first thing I'd like to propose, if it's okay with everybody, is actually taking, uh, Agenda Item 5.7 in the Planning and Economic Development Committee Agenda and moving that, uh, right after the Consent Agenda. We've got some folks coming from, from a fair distance who need to drive back, uh, after their presentation, after council's decision. So I'll ask Seth as Chair of Planning Committee and everybody else, is that okay? If we move that to...
Right at Northside.
It's at Northside Apartments, yeah. Okay, if we do that right after Consent Agenda, okay. Second, yes, since the, uh, I know one of the Consent Agenda items, go ahead.
Uh, we request that we move 3.2 out of Consent Agenda.
Thank you. So that will move back into City Administration Committee, I believe.
Yeah, we can make that to 4.1.
The new 4.1, thank you. Uh, and then we do have a couple of special, uh, resolutions to be read by council members, but as we are waiting for a couple of members of the public to join us, I'd like to suggest that we go directly to reports of municipal officials, uh, which we... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I switched that. Bike share first, and then reports of municipal officials. So the special presentation, uh, before council, the bike share update and potential service. Uh, they are joining us virtually, uh, which our city clerk, Julie Holcomb, is facilitating.
Bike share is downstairs.
Oh, bike share is actually here, okay.
Um, yeah. Supervisor Radhav is joining us virtually.
Oh, and he's ready.
Available if you want to meet first.
Let's do that, then. See, it's already the first hiccup. So we will start with the Town of Ithaca Supervisor, Rod Howe, and his, uh, report.
And did you want to move 4.2 through 4.4 to the end of the agenda, because I have an executive session in it?
You're right. While we connect with Rod, I would also like to suggest something I already suggested via email, which is that we have, um, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4 are all items under Executive Session. Uh, that makes the meeting a bit clunky if we were to adjourn downstairs and then come back upstairs, and it might confuse members of the public who turn into the meeting and find that nothing's happening. They might think the meeting's over. So I'd like to suggest that we hold those executive sessions at the end of the meeting. That's okay.
It's actually 4.3 or 4.4.
Oh. Yeah, right, you're right. Four point, the new 4.3 to the new 4.5. Um, so we're going now to Rod, and then, yes, and then Jennifer and Hector. So, uh, Rod, good to see you. Can you hear me? Uh, barely. I could hear you a little bit. Could we try again?
Not coming over the projector like it is.
That was allowed under the executive order of Governor Cuomo. Those executive order, uh, powers have expired, and so we have to wait for the state legislature itself to come back into session.
Really? Can you hear me?
Next month. And now we can hear Rod. But just so everybody knows, we are pushing, once the legislature comes back into session, to allow for, uh, hybrid, virtual, and in-person meetings. Uh, Rod, good to see you.
Uh, I can only see Julie, but, uh, that's fine. Uh, so do you want me to go ahead? Okay. Uh, so, good evening. I'm not sure if you've been able to discern the town's rhythm, but our goal is to be before City Council at least four times a year with Bill Goodman and I alternating our time with you. I'm sure you all, all figured that out already. Uh, just a few updates, and I'm sure you will appreciate that they are brief mentions, and that I'm not going into detail on any of them. So I'm starting with community choice aggregation. So Louise has become part of the core team, helping to make decisions about moving forward in a way that ensures green energy and community and economic development benefits for our residents. We are working with Sustainable Tompkins, who on behalf of several county municipalities secured a grant from the Park Foundation. So we're excited about that. We didn't get as much as we had asked for, so we're, um, we're retooling a little bit. Uh, but it's great to have Louise as part of our team, and we are asking municipalities to pass, uh, legislation that allows them to even consider joining, uh, CCA. So I think I sent that to Seth, so at some point that might come before City Council. Sustainability related, I think it's safe to say that both the town and the city were delighted with the passing of the Energy Code Supplement. It was a great deal of collaborative work. And now on to thinking about the energy use of our existing buildings. American Rescue Plant Funds. The town is getting 1.6 million. It's a little bit less than what the city is getting, and we plan on using it for water and sewer infrastructure projects. Uh, short-term rental. The ad hoc committee that has been working on this for quite some time hopes to get a draft policy to the full town board in September. So stay tuned, uh, on what we end up with. We've, one thing that I think has taken some more time is when we had to focus on lakefront property, and there's been quite a discussion about how to handle lakefront property. But, uh, Bill assures me that it's coming to the town board soon, a draft for them to consider. I think in, uh, previous meetings, I had mentioned a special focus on the inlet valley, the area from Ithaca Beer Company to where Turbax, for those of you who knew Turbax used to be. It's in a really important corridor, and we'd like to see it developed in a way that doesn't replicate what Route 13 looks like in the city. We are imagining two overlay districts and have given a lot of thought to allowable uses, uh, what the kinds of businesses and activity that we want to see in that corridor. So we're in the process of converting that language into our zoning, and again, this will be brought to the town board sometime in the fall. Historic preservation related. We're excited to be working with Brian McCracken and the Ithaca Landmarks Preservation Commission to develop an ordinance and a committee structure that would cover both the city and the town. We've made great progress and have been in contact with state reps, or Brian is, uh, to make sure that they will be supportive of this. And we hope to have this in place by the end of the year. If you have gone to the Town of Ithaca website and have been underwhelmed, join the club. Uh, we are working on a new website that will be ready mid to late fall. And I think I noticed that the city perhaps has a new website. It looked different, uh, when I was there recently, so congratulations. Uh, uh, we are also moving, uh, to a new integrated data management software system. We're working with a company called OpenGov, so if you have any questions about that, let us know. 5G. Our Codes and Ordances Committee is getting back to that topic now that the Energy Code Supplement has passed. Uh, we expect, uh, two more months of this being discussed at the committee level before a new draft of our telecommunications law goes to the full board. And as I think you know, uh, we passed our new neighborhood code. Uh, it was also being called the Traditional Neighborhood. Uh, this is really for areas on South Hill, West Hill, and East Hill. Our, our immediate focus is on South Hill. There's where some developers want to move forward on some projects. Uh, this would be the area around the intersection of 96B and West King Road. So we're planning for a charrette, uh, in early October, and certainly, I'm sure the city's going to be interested in seeing what, um, we might want to do there. So, um, we'll make sure you know about that charrette when it happens in October. Uh, there's a lot more I could say, but I decided to stop there and just see if there's any questions. And, you know, we appreciate these opportunities to just give brief updates. Any questions? Any comments?
Thanks, Rod. Yeah, any questions? I'm not seeing any, but I'm seeing a lot of appreciative, uh, looking eyebrows. Uh, yeah, yes, George.
And it, it was great to get a call from the mayor when I was on vacation. So I, see, we really are connected, uh, the city and the town, so I, I really like, I do, actually, I really do like that, so...
Sure.
Thanks for all the good collaboration, and I know we're going to continue working collectively on some projects.
I appreciate you both taking the call and, uh, not minding when I did the thing where you said, "Well, I'm on vacation." I said, "Oh, great, so you've got some time." So, much appreciated. Uh, George?
Okay, thanks so much.
I'm sorry, Rod, just one second. It looks like George McGonigal from the first ward has a question.
Hi, Rod. Thanks for coming in. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, will it be possible to check in now and again to see where you guys are on your 5G, 5G guidelines? As we're working through all...
Sure. Uh, yes, of course. Um, you know, Bill, uh, you know, I talked to Bill before, um, yesterday, and I know one difference is I think we're, uh, considering perhaps a larger distance between any 5G equipment and homes. Uh, so yes, you can check in. I think the next Codes Committee is next Wednesday, so there may be more to say after next Wednesday. And just use Bill as your primary contact for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Rod. Appreciate it.
Okay. Take care.
Uh, we'll move now to our next, uh, special presentation, which is Bike Share Update. And we have Jennifer and Hector here. Thank you for being with us. Art Fernando is here, too.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, uh, did I do it right? The green light's on, and people can hear me? Is that true? Okay, good. As close as I can through my mask. Oh, I hear it now. Okay, great. Um, just to introduce, um, I think maybe we know all of you. Um, I'm Jennifer Dotson. I am the Executive Director of the Center for Community Transportation, which includes Bike Walk Tompkins and Ithaca Car Share Back Up Ride Home. Fernando de Aragon is our, the Chair of our Board and also the Staff Director of the Ithaca, um, Tompkins County Transportation Council. I'm sure you know him as well. Hector Cheng is our active transportation planner with Bike Walk Tompkins. He has been, um, around since, since we had Bike Share, even before then. So he has a little history here with, uh, with this. And he has a presentation that I think Julie, yep, it's already up, so I'm just gonna let you go ahead.
That's perfect. Thank you very much.
Hector, would you prefer people to hold any questions till the end? It's a short presentation. Would you prefer holding things or people to just raise their hands as things come up?
Um, I think it probably is best if we just hold questions till the end. It's like five to seven minutes, so try to make it short and simple and sweet. You also all got a memo within your agenda packet. I have paper copies if you prefer to read it on paper, um, which covers a lot of the same information as the presentation. It's just this one has pictures, which hopefully will grab people's attentions and keep this mood, keep the mood on this. Uh, anyway, uh, so, um, I just, we're here to kind of just give you an update on what we've learned through, uh, about Bike Share in Ithaca, through the experience that we had with Lime, and kind of like the next steps that we have, uh, done the research to see how to bring back a service to Ithaca. Um, we're kind of at a crossroads, I would say, and it would be great to hear what you guys have to think about how to move forward on bringing this vital transportation service to our community back. Uh, next slide. Um, just a quick slide as to why Bike Share is important. Besides the obvious benefits of what that bicycling brings, from health to environmental benefits to social benefits. What you see on the left is kind of the connectivity that Lime and Bike Share provided to Ithaca. That's a map of all the stops, all the places that people ended their trips with in 2019 using Lime. And literally, you can see every single street, in the flats, in East Hill, and even some in West End and South Hill covered. You can kind of see the street grid even. Um, so literally, bikes went to every single street. Uh, people went to every single street in Ithaca using Lime Bikes. Next. Um, another important thing is that it's kind of written to a lot of our community goals and plans. In Plan Ithaca, it's Goal 15 of the Transportation Chapter. It's an IED's Economic Recovery Strategy Downtown Ithaca's, uh, Strategic Plan. And even in our conversations with South Side and Village at Ithaca, where they're starting to develop some bicycling programming, we found that the lack of Bike Share in 2020 was one of the primary motivators for them, uh, doing a lot of the bike, uh, work that we're collaborating with, with them right now. Next slide. So in the memo, we called the, uh, Bike Share Experience literally a runaway success, and the reason why is because, based on a community of our size, we expected around 10,000 rides per year with the Bike Share, and that's about like peaking at 5,000 rides on the summer month. Next. Um, but then what we actually saw...
Why was public comment changed? I, I was told that public, I called ahead, and I was told that I would be, public comment would be before this presentation.
It was not public comment, babe. This was a presentation.
I know, but the public comment was before the presentation.
No, I told you that the presentations would be before public comment, and that you're the first speaker after the, our presentations. We just heard from the town.
No, you said there were awards or, or other presentations to the police.
And the other awards, they're not ready. The families are not here yet, so we had to...
No, I, I don't, I, because of COVID, I don't appreciate what you just did.
The same is pretty much here in the agenda. Nothing has been changed. Just here, the Bike Share report, and then later down on the agenda, the public comment. Do you like to hang out until public comment?
How many people from the public here? And you couldn't let people go first?
Look, it's the, the printed way to the agenda.
I couldn't know the agenda because I wasn't allowed to come in here the way we normally do.
So thank you. We're gonna finish the presentation.
No, no, there's no thank you. Call internet for you.
Thank you very much.
If you're not online, you're, you're a lost case. It doesn't matter. I didn't see it. Well, I don't remember, Julie, I swear. I thought... Public comment goes first and then the presentation.
No, I told you specifically.
But because of COVID, I resent having to sit here, waiting to hear these people lie to the community again.
I understand, and why I asked them to let you up and all the speakers up is so that they could hear, so that you could hear this presentation before your public comment.
And how long is your presentation?
Eight minutes? You'll be able to respond to it during public comment. No, that's all right. Yeah, next slide. Um, basically, I was talking about the ridership, and within the first year with the Lime Pedal Bikes, they received over 70,000 rides in 2018 alone, blowing out of the water. And then, next slide, uh, with the Lime E-Bikes, they exceeded over 100,000 rides in 2019. So basically, the ridership from the Bike Share blew all of our expectations out of the water. It was well-used by the community. Next slide. So in total, um, next, sorry, I have like a lot of, just keep going down. Um, over 177,000 rides in the two years that I was here. Based on a phone survey that was randomized, we found that one in four Ithacans had used Lime Bikes. Um, 28% of those people replaced that car trip, like a personal car trip, and 24% of people replaced a taxi and Uber trip. So very much in line with our community's goals of trying to reduce dependency on vehicle use. And we also found evidence from the Bike Share data that we analyzed that it was used for very hard-to-serve trips. And these are hard-to-serve trips by public transit, that's what we mean. So a lot of first-mile, last-mile trips to transit stops, and also trips that happen in the late evening, early morning times. A lot of service workers, a lot of people ending their shifts or starting their shifts at a time when public transit doesn't run. Um, next slide. Here's a cool diagram of kind of like all the connections that were, uh, that happened through Lime Bike, through Bike Share. Basically, neighborhoods being connected to each other, some closer to others, but basically, every neighborhood, people use, uh, Bike Share to get from every neighborhood in Ithaca to every other neighborhood in Ithaca. What we find most important is really what Bike Share brought in terms of community benefits. It really inspired people to bike, not only on their, not only on Bike Share, but also on their own bikes. Here are pictures of outreach events that we did with the GAC seniors, at Stone Coria Apartments, which is an INHS housing complex, and with the, um, Tompkins County Mental Health. It really touched every single slice of our community, especially slices of our community that aren't...
Look, it's the printed way of the agenda.
I couldn't know the agenda because I wasn't allowed to come in here the way we normally do.
So thank you. We're going to finish.
No, no, there's no thank you. Call internet for you. If you're not online, you're, you're a lost case.
This is the order of the agenda.
It doesn't matter. I didn't see it. Well, I don't remember, Julie, I swear. I thought public comment goes first and then the presentation. But because of COVID, I resent having to sit here waiting to hear these people lie to the community again.
I understand and why I asked them to let you up and all the speakers up is so that they could hear, so that you could hear this presentation before your public.
And how long is your presentation?
Eight minutes. You'll be able to respond to it during public comment. No, that's all right. Yeah, next slide. Basically, I was talking about the ridership and within the first year with the Lime Pedal Bikes, they received over 70,000 rides in 2018 alone, blowing out of the water. And then, next slide, with the Lime E-Bikes, they exceeded over 100,000 rides in 2019. So basically, the ridership from the Bike Share blew all of our expectations out of the water. It was well-used by the community. So in total, next, sorry, I have like a lot of, just keep going down. Over 177,000 rides in the two years that it was here. Based on a phone survey that was randomized, we found that one in four Ithacans had used Lime Bikes. 28% of those people replaced that car trip, like a personal car trip, and 24% of people replaced a taxi and Uber trip. So very much in line with our community's goals of trying to reduce dependency on vehicle use. And we also found evidence from the Bike Share data that we analyzed that it was used for very hard-to-serve trips. And these are hard-to-serve trips by public transit. That's what we mean. So a lot of first mile, last mile trips to transit stops and also trips that happened in the late evening, early morning times, a lot of service workers, a lot of people ending their shifts or starting their shifts at a time when public transit doesn't run. Next slide. Here's a cool diagram of kind of like all the connections that were, that happened through Lime Bike, through Bike Share. Basically neighborhoods being connected to each other, some closer to others, but basically every neighborhood, people use Bike Share to get from every neighborhood in Ithaca to every other neighborhood in Ithaca. What we find most important is really what Bike Share brought in terms of community benefits. It really inspired people to bike, not only on their, not only on Bike Share, but also on their own bikes. Here are pictures of outreach events that we did with the GAC seniors at Stone Coria Apartments, which is an INHS housing complex and with the Tompkins County Mental Health. It really touched every single slice of our community, especially slices of our community that aren't, aren't well-served by our current transportation system. So what happened, might be the question that you have, right? Here's a picture of Lime Bike in summer 2017, launching in one of their first markets, South Bend, Indiana, with then Mayor Pete Buttigieg. And then in summer 2019, when council was debating whether they should launch, whether they should partner with Lime on an e-scooter pilot, they launched like their hundredth or something e-scooter system in Europe alone. So they basically grew to a size that, based on like the response to industry and shareholder pressure, they grew to a size that really was something that was only serving major markets primarily with e-scooters. I'm sure that meteoric rise was very also, I like the picture on the left because basically I don't think Mayor Pete Buttigieg knew that by summer 2019, he himself would be running for like presidency. So it's kind of like the same bittersweet feeling, I would say, of seeing someone going, growing so fast to the point that they kind of, you're limited by, just so anyway, next. Oh, there we go. Here's a quick comparison of what the two different entities grew to become in two years by themselves. The next one, sorry, that's just me. Anyway, basically what happened in 2020, Lime suspended their service worldwide due to COVID-19 and then they basically restarted in May, only in major markets mainly with e-scooters. So what did we do then? In September and December, we started researching with ITCTCC, ITCTC, on the state of the micro-mobility industries. That's e-bikes, e-scooters, et cetera. And then we facilitated a request for information to see who's interested in working in the interest in Ithaca market. We received vastly fewer responses than in 2017, which is the one that we did to find Lime as a company that would be interested in Ithaca. That being said, we did find a top candidate. We invited them to demo their e-scooter and e-bike here in Ithaca in March of 2021. And then they kind of went silent after they got their e-scooter pilot in the Bronx with a thousand-plus e-scooters. So understood, no hard feelings. But basically, we went back to the drawing board and we started researching into the feasibility of having a locally-owned nonprofit Bike Share. And more recently in July, some private companies have actually started reaching out to us and the city about operating a Bike Share system in Ithaca again. So that's kind of the crossroads that I mentioned that we're at in our, in our community. In our last slide, basically we have the two options available to us to restart such a system. One is the private operator model, very much the same way that it worked with Lime, Bird or Spin, any other VC-backed startup model. VC is venture capital in this case. Where the quick launch, the benefit is that you get a quick launch because you had, all you have to do is just sign an MOU between the city and the operator. And while the city has oversight power, they definitely have limited control over operations and whether the system remains in Ithaca or not. That being said, it is generally, you don't have to put any money down as a city. And the other one is the community-owned and operated model, which we find it's kind of the more traditional and enduring Bike Share model that we have, where a not-for-profit or the government buys the equipment and then they let a nonprofit operate the system. This one, obviously, the biggest caveat is that you need sustainable funding. You need $200,000 to $600,000 in capital for a system of 100 to 250 bikes, which is what we had with Lime and what we recommend to have again. And then $150,000 to $250,000 of year in operational, essentially, funding to sustain the system. And that's usually coming from a mix of both private and public sector contributions over, over time. Should the city want to see Bike Share again, which I really hope you guys do, those are kind of the two ways that we see bringing Bike Share back to our community and all the benefits that come with it. We would love to answer any questions that you guys have regarding the two options. If there's any inclinations for one or the other, we'd also love to hear that. We are here at your service to do more research, more looking into all the questions that you guys have on how to bring back this vital mode of transportation to our community. Cool. Thanks.
Thank you, Hector. Any questions? Yes, Duxin and then George.
So is there no hope for the nonprofit model to, to be a little closer in cost versus, you know, yeah, cost versus operational cost in terms of pricing it and trying to make something close to a profit?
I think.
Self-sustaining, I think, not profit, but self.
Self-sustaining. Literally every single person has tried, both the private companies and the nonprofit are trying to figure out ways to self-sustain. And the ones that are nonprofit are generally self-sustaining because they kind of have to, whereas the ones that are private, they're kind of riding on a lot of venture capital and hopefully they can tweak, tweak their way to profitability or go public. If we want a service that is affordable enough for, for our community, especially for people who absolutely need it, it would not make sense to increase the price to a point that it would be like bike rental, really, like a private bike rental. You want it to be essentially run as like public transit really, where because of all the benefits that it brings, we want more people to use it. And it has, it will be priced at a point that is very accessible and affordable for people to use on an everyday basis.
I do want to add that there's significant, you would need private sponsorship or public support. It's much more like transit than say like Car Share, which it's a, it's a different model. So don't expect, this is something that needs a subsidy significantly ongoing.
George and then Seth.
I recognize this is a weird question, but it's just a question. Is there any way to bring down the price on a public model if you incorporate unclaimed stolen bicycles? And maybe even people that live in the jungle to supply the, the bikes and kind of just have a disorganized free-for-all of bikes.
George, you're answering your own question.
I didn't hear what you said.
Answering your own question. I, I think that that's maybe what we call first-generation Bike Share. And it, it did work. That was kind of the first generation, maybe 20, 25 years ago. And now that we have access to technology and connectivity and basically more bulletproof bikes, you have the opportunity to have the bikes last long enough. You can find them. You can access them easily. You can still make those hires and make those jobs really worth it to the community, which I think is important. So that piece is totally within reach. But in terms of the equipment, I, I think the consensus among the industry is that really, really it's better to have purpose-built bikes.
Yeah, it's kind of better to have just one kind of bike that it will last you for five, 10 years even. That way, your investment in capital, which isn't insignificant, will last you a lot longer. And people have an expectation that the bike will work a certain way. If literally every time that you try to ride a Bike Share, it's like a different bike, it wouldn't be the dependable service that people expect. Though that's more of like a bike library situation, and that is something that we are also looking at in collaboration with the community partners that I mentioned.
What's a bike library?
Where people can borrow a bike, usually a refurbished bike, that they can have for a while, basically, like just take it.
That's an interesting concept.
Thanks. Seth?
So I appreciate the presentation. Just to, to answer one of your questions, I, I'm very interested in seeing a Bike Share program in Ithaca. I think I lean more towards the community-owned and operated nonprofit model. And the reason is that, I know that, as you pointed out, like, there's a lot of benefits to Lime and there's a lot of rides, obviously. But I found, I thought that the system itself was, seemed to get kind of, just in terms of regulatory kind of ability by the city seemed kind of difficult to regulate and just, you know, and unpredictable. I mean, you know, they launched the Bike Share program and then the business plan kind of changed on a dime. And all of a sudden, it was like, we're getting rid of the bikes. Now we want to do scooters. And then, and then they pull out of the community completely. So, you know, I realized that the advantage there, obviously, is we don't have to pay for it. But I, I would prefer to have a program over which we had some control and we had some sustainability and knew that it was going to be around for a while and that we had the ability to kind of scope it the way that the community wanted. And I realize the cost is really the issue. And, and I wonder if, you know, if, and I do have a question at the end of this, but I wonder if, you know, TCAT, the TCAT model could maybe be a model that we could use for something like this, where you have it jointly funded between the county and the city in Cornell. And obviously that helps to bring down the cost for any one entity. So, you know, there's a precedent for that. And then the question I have is, you know, I, I think we know that the public sources of funding to be used for something like this, but you said that there could potentially be private sources of funding. So what would, what would an example of private funding for a Bike Share program be?
Sure. Do you want to answer the TCAT?
Why don't you fill in if I miss anything? I mean, we're all familiar with like City Bike and some of the other, let's call them traditional Bike Shares, like in Minneapolis, there's strong healthcare presence. So, you know, it's, it's a sponsorship by a large, major industry, local industry, right? So I'm not sure what our capacity is locally. Those conversations have been ongoing. So ongoing for years, looking for that level of funding because it's not in the level of 20,000 or 30,000 a year. It's really at the level of like 100,000, which is difficult to find in our community. I would encourage you to talk to your colleagues, Laura and Duck, about the recent MOU negotiation with Cornell to explore whether the TCAT model might be appropriate for this. It was very difficult. So I'm not sure that that's appropriate, from my perspective as a TCAT board member, appropriate to replicate in this. I would say that the question that it seems to me, looking at these options, is if we go for a community-owned and operated model, we should be ready to wait a number of years until we can find that funding. I think realistically, that's the choice.
At least a good year, I would say.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine. I think we also are a little bit different minds between me and Jennifer. I think they might be able to find that level of funding if it's pieced from multiple sources. So not just one big sponsor, but something, someone's paying 50 and someone's paying 10, someone's paying 5 and someone's paying 5. But it would require time really to piece that together. And I, if there was someone that was going to do that, it might take them a whole year to even piece that together at best.
Or longer.
Or longer, right? And you still need that capital funding, which because of the size in most other communities, it has usually come from some sort of government grant, for example, because it's just a one-time capital investment and then.
I have Graham and then Cynthia.
Thank you. And thank you, Hector, for that presentation. So I think I agree with Seth. I think if we think about the community-based model, I would want to see the costs. I mean, you know, our tax base is very limited. So I think we have to recognize that it's not city residents that are just using these bikes. It's people coming in for tourism and stuff like that. And I noticed in your plot that there's a good, significant amount of usage by students. So I, I mean, I think Cornell needs to be part of the discussion. So I really want to emphasize that. In terms of, you know, public transportation, you, you mentioned that, I guess, some cities have already gone with a Bike Share program. So it would be helpful, I think, to see some of the, the finances of those. You mentioned Buffalo and a few other cities. So at some stage, it would be good to see what investment is needed by cities. And then my last point, not really a question, but I hope you would certainly look more closely at the potential for conflict. We saw that. I know it's not restricted to Lime Bikes, but as they increased in usage in the city, the conflict or potential conflict between pedestrians and bikes, you know, in terms of certain areas that we wanted to try and control. And making sure we've got a plan for the infrastructure to use this increased bike usage, I think is going to be more important if it's going to be successful. So, but thank you again for the presentation.
No, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. Cynthia?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'm almost, I'm also interested just for clarification. Because in the presentation, and I think also in the maps, there was commingling of data that includes the, the bike data and the e-bike data. So I'm going to presume that the bike data would be much more limited to the flats and you wouldn't see participation in Cornell and South Hill and West Hill. So as you're talking about this program, are you talking about an e-bike program or a bike program? And just to be specific, because I, I want to be clear about what it is exactly that we're talking about.
We're talking about e-bikes. The industry has moved into scooters and we're not talking about scooters. Just to be clear, we're not talking about that, but it has moved pretty significantly to e-bikes. Okay, so. Now that they're legal too in New York State.
Right, all right. So just for that clarification, that's helpful. And then if, if that is the case, I think obviously there's a, a much broader service area, definitely to the hills. And inclusion with Cornell as a partnership would be essential, I think, a big part of that conversation, as was mentioned earlier. And then as, as Graham mentioned, that conflict between pedestrians and e-bikes is, can be a large concern as the working group that was working on that discovered. So thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
Thank you. Yes, Duxin?
Sorry, I forgot to mention my preference. So I agree with Seth. I think a community-owned model would be preferable to me for sustainability reasons and the fact that, you know, the people that I saw using, some people of all ages using them. But, you know, my just anecdotal data was a lot of the, as you mentioned, some of the most vulnerable people who don't have the most resources. That said, I, as a three-bike owner, use them sometimes too, just out of convenience if I didn't have my bike with me. So they were helpful for everybody. So I'm a huge supporter. I'm curious, Savante or anyone who knows, if, if ARP invest, money might be suitable for initial investment. Oh, and with regard to Cornell, I totally agree. They should be part of it. My frustration with Cornell and Lime was that they were hostile to Bike Share and refused to have, to allow them on campus. I mean, you know, students would ride them on campus regardless, but they would disallow redistribution on campus. And that was frustrating and something we'd have to work through.
Yeah, I'll have to check on ARPA funds. I actually don't know if that's a qualified use, but I could check with Steve. Okay, any other thoughts?
We're here, like Hector says, we're here, we're here at your service and would love to bring this service back.
And I guess the private, just out of curiosity, the private, there doesn't seem to be a lot of enthusiasm to have another private operator, if, even if they were to come very soon.
As, as those who advocate for, for bike use and also talk to a lot of people who want bikes, we hear a lot about when are you going to bring Bike Share back? When are you going to bring Bike Share? That's one of the first things that we heard from Southside when we worked with them on the Major Taylor Ride. When are you going to bring bikes back? So I hope we can do it quickly. The concept of that much investment feels a little daunting at this moment.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not hearing a lot of support for the, the private option. We'll say, you know, that might change if we actually see a private option, what they're offering, what the benefits could be. And if we were able to engage a conversation, especially along the parameters that Seth was mentioning, about regulation and how we can be involved there. And, but yes, Jennifer?
We, we do have two private operators currently reaching out. One reached out to Aaron in the Transportation Division and one had been in touch with us and we put them in touch, you know. So that option exists. One of them mentioned as early as this fall launch. So, so I'm just saying, so people realize what the, what the choice could be. If, if there were appetite for an arrangement, maybe improved, but similar to what we had with Lime, with the local oversight committee, working with Cornell and the Transportation Division and, you know, whoever was stated in the MOU. I, I think we would see e-bikes pretty soon, next spring, if not earlier.
Yes, Seth?
I guess I, I don't understand like why the community-owned and operated model is going to take so long. I mean, the numbers that, that were laid out in the presentation are not, I mean, they're, it's expensive and I understand that, but it's not like outrageous. I mean, it kind of feels like if there's a community will to do this and, you know, especially if, you know, maybe the county is interested, it's definitely something that benefits, you know, county residents as well. I mean, I don't see why it would take years and years to set this up. I guess that's what I'm confused about.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking from conversation that, that we've had for probably five to six to eight years, looking, looking at this and having not been able to pull together the funding in that time. So maybe we can. Maybe with the right work, we absolutely can. I'm also looking at Laura. We've had some of these conversations about this particular topic. So that would be fantastic. When Hector and I, we mentioned the little difference, you know, it's a, it's a, who's looking at the crystal ball, right? If you, it's a crystal ball of where funding could come from, where, what priorities. There are a lot of priorities in front of all of us right now. So. That's my pessimist upon that. That's my pessimist upon that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, I think the, the sentiment of council is pretty clear, um, about the, the community-based model. But again, if, if there's a more detailed, um, presentation, maybe from one of the private operators that you'd like to bring forward. Possibly even starting at the Board of Public Works meeting, let's, let's have that discussion, uh, as you move forward. Otherwise, I. I'm not seeing a lot of folks jumping at, um, at the private option.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Jennifer, Hector, thank you very much. Great presentation, very informative too. And I loved some of those graphs. Fascinating stuff. Fascinating. Um, so we'll move now. Julie, is now the time for the special resolutions or the public? Great.
Just, Julie, just quickly, I did hear from, from David Slattery, who said he should be on his way, so.
I think one person, one member of Slattery, they have to downstage.
Okay.
I asked that we just do public comment first and then.
Okay.
Great. Um, so first for public comment is Fay Gogakis. Fay will be followed by Nevin. Nevin will be followed by Genevieve.
My name is Fay Gogakis. I live in the city of Ithaca. I've lived here since 1982. I've been riding a bike ever, ever since then. I live to bike and I bike to live. I don't have a car. The presentation, which in many ways, I'm glad I did see it, I was going to see it on cable, was disgusting. Your response to them was equally disgusting. And why is that? I have spent so many meetings talking to you about the concerns of these bicycles. Not to mention my council people, how many hours we been on the phone? Okay, I'm trembling now because ever since this hit the, hit the, hit the stands, which I was told the reporter was going to contact me. Nobody cares about my concerns. That's why I'm not having been contacted, okay? Ithaca Voice doesn't care. Other media don't care. Local radio station, local radio personalities don't care. Cause I all asked them, please help me get my concerns out. You haven't done the research to see how damning these companies operate and how they come into communities deceptive. And we have talked about that to exhaustion, to exhaustion, to have you, my councilperson, and you, Mr. McGonigal. You know, not even raise the concerns that we've been talking about for a year and a half before COVID. And then there's council people who like, oh, I don't return calls to you. Cynthia Brock, Deborah, some of you will return, the others will return the call. But what, is that, is that democracy? Is that representative? Even if you disagree, Seth and Duxton, with my concerns, you are my representative. You can say, this is what my rep, my constituent said, these are the concerns. You don't have to agree with them, but you can raise them. And you had every opportunity to do that tonight and you show me time and time again, just like the media does. No, no. Where, look at this photo. The bike is next to the bike rack, the Lime Bike. This has been a contentious issue from day one. I need a bike rack. They have taken over all the bike racks. Okay, they're in the middle of roads. We have elderly people, we have people in wheelchairs. We have construction and you want them in the fall? When you can't even get through the back of Center Ithaca where all these damn bikes pile up to get the bus? Where is your responsibility? Not to mention, this article says they're lightweight. There's no way they're lightweight. And Graham, you, you second my concern. You don't have to second it now, but these bikes are extremely heavy. You can't, you have to lift them. You can't move them. They lock. The companies are deceptive. They came in just with the mayor. You guys didn't know that they were coming in. You, we, we talked about that. We talked about all these things. These companies are deceptive. You didn't even ask, uh, her, you didn't even ask her which company she even contacted. So, you know, I have a list of concerns.
That is past three minutes.
List of things that.
Thank you very much, Fay.
First of all, you don't even care. You don't even care to discuss the problems that we had because we had a lot of problems, unlike what this article says.
That is time. That is time. So we have a couple more in-person public commenters and then we do have more, uh, online public commenters.
We need a public hearing about the problems Lime Bikes have created in our community.
That is time. Thank you very much, Fay. Next is Nevin. Following Nevin will be Genevieve.
Okay, did you just refer to me as Ms. Sabat because you pronounced my name wrong last time.
Ms. Sabat. Did I pronounce it correctly this time?
No, you didn't even try.
Nevin?
No.
Apologies. Ms. Sabat, followed by Genevieve.
We went over this last month, remember? Don't you remember? You want me to, do you remember who I am? I was here last month, remember? I talked to you about getting my ass beat by Officer Dana Half a couple of years ago? And then like that same summer after nobody here cared about my ass beating by one of your police officers that you said it wasn't a big deal. Well, remember that same summer you were like, oh, BLM, it's awesome. And you even like said it here, all of you? And it was like, what? You actually want people to lose their mind and go crazy for you to listen to them? You don't want them just to come in here and talk to you. You want them screaming at you in the street? Is that what you would prefer for people to understand, for you to understand people's grievances? Is that what you would like? Or is it because they're black and you don't care about Arabs getting their asses beat in this town by Officer Dana Half? Just wondering. Anyway, back to the issue at hand here, which is. Mayor Zavante, Zavante, I don't know how to say your name either. Doesn't it hurt? It stings. It stings all the time when nobody says your name right, right, Zavante? Anyway, uh, if you're planning on evicting people or allowing the sheriff's deputies to do that. That also includes cats and dogs and birds and lizards and there are a lot of non-human residents that have their housing. Um, in the insecure status right now, uh, but more specifically because of COVID-19, but always. Always is it hard to get rent if you have a big dog in Ithaca. That's why I have to go hang out in Spencer and meet those nice people who support Trump. And then you're like, what are they talking about in Ithaca? These people let me rent a house because I have a German Shepherd. Nobody in Ithaca lets me do that. But anyway.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I shouldn't have done that.
I didn't know what you left your phone.
I just meant to leave it for the public. I'm really sorry. I'm really sorry.
It's okay. It's alright. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, I had said I was.
I thought you were, I thought you were giving me a message.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have done that. I'm really traumatized right now.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it, Fay. Anyway, so back to the animals. And remember when you got elected, how I, I recommended the whole deer management thing? Cause I graduated from Tufts Veterinary School, animals and public policy. So I am credible on the whole animal thing. I know you, I know that's not interesting to you. But, uh, if you have a big, big dog in this town, it's hard to get rent. And, um, if you're planning on evicting a bunch of people, like where, there's not enough space in Spencer for all these people with pets.
Thank you. Next is Genevieve. And then, uh, Julie, uh, is it okay if I hand it over to you for the online?
Yes.
Folks? Great.
Two online speakers.
Thank you.
Alright, hello guys. Um, so I'm here to talk about the, uh, Good Cause Eviction Bill that we've been drafting and sending by some of the people in this room. Um, as some of you may have seen, we had a sort of, uh, commute, like tenant community assembly thing outside here a few days ago. It was like. Forty, fifty people, um, and we talked about the formation of the bill and like what people's concerns and stuff were. I know a few of you had expressed different questions and concerns. Um, Laura in particular, you had talked about concerns about landlords ramping up surveillance and, uh, that came up at the, at the thing. And we would be definitely interested in working on ways to make sure that that doesn't happen. Um, but, uh, for those who have seen the bill, I know that there were some questions about, uh. In situations of redevelopment as well as, uh, the sort of timeline for non-renewals of leases. Seth, you had brought that up. Um, and, uh, we did nail down a sort of general structure for how to do the timeline on lease renewals. Like when that decision has to be made by, when it can be reversed, et cetera. Um, and there'll be a new version coming out about this soon. But what I'm really here to say is that it would be very helpful to have like people who are on this council. Uh, interested in sort of moving this on to the PEDC agenda because one of the sort of points of conflict thus far is that people are nervous about negotiating the terms of the bill before it's on the agenda. And like circulating and stuff. Um, Albany, as you guys know, recently passed a version of this bill. Rochester's working on one. New Paltz is working on one. Utica's working on one. Um, and there's a couple other municipalities that are working on one too. And it would be great for Ithaca to keep up with progressive housing policy on this issue. And in each of those municipalities, the bills look a little bit different. Um, it's all like based on local tenant organizations and stuff. And there will be some unique details until we can get a state law that sort of applies to everybody. Um, but once we have sort of everybody's ideas consolidated into another draft of the bill with some of the concerns that you guys had expressed, addressed in it. Um, we will send that around and it would just be good to know who is interested in sort of getting in on the process. And supporting that bill in getting onto the PEDC agenda, not in its final form, just like for circulation, public comment from people, et cetera, et cetera. Um, because there is sort of like a snowball effect that starts happening with how much people pay attention to it or in, and are invested in contributing to. The language of it, once they know for a fact that the city's considering it and it sort of becomes a real idea. So particularly those who are on PEDC. Um, it would be, yeah, great to talk about this and we'll be sending out an email to you guys shortly, um, with a second draft of the bill. And, uh, yeah, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you guys for hearing me.
Thank you, Genevieve. Um, yes, and Julie?
Okay, George, if you can hear us, you are our next speaker. You will be followed by Zachary Nguyen. And please introduce yourself for, uh, our audience tonight.
Uh, hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Uh, yes, my name is George, George Chikin-Gimi, uh, resident in, uh, Ithaca, work for College Town. Um, part of the solid, it's made for common council, but I wanted to also talk about, uh, Good Cause Eviction here. Um, uh, we're trying to get past, uh, echoing a lot of what, uh, Genevieve had to say. Um, it's, it's something I think we need to get behind. I think Albany is sort of putting away on this. And I think, um, we have a bit of a stronger bill here, um, than that was passed in Albany. I think it's good because he wants to sort of, you know, keep up. I think Ithaca's reputation is a very progressive city. We have a lot of potential to sort of keep this going and, and I. I would sort of urge caution against people who think that the bill perhaps might be going too far or that there are too many sort of, uh, things left, uh. There are too many sort of, uh, I wouldn't say, um. The bill in its entirety as it is right now, I think, uh, should pass because if we start making too many amendments to it, um, as it stands, um. There, there will be potential for it to sort of be exploited and whatnot, um, and loopholes be manipulated. So if we are going to pass Good Cause Eviction, we have to make sure that it's solid and, and it's, uh, and it's something that the most marginalized of our tenants here in Ithaca. Uh, can be protected by and, um, that it's, it's, it's susceptible to loopholes in the law. And, uh, it's, um, I think I'd love to have more conversations about it with, you know, my, my representatives, uh, other sort of older people. In, on the common council right now, to sort of reiterate that, I, I think this bill will, you know, it's not going after landowners or anything that regard of stripping a builder's rights. Or making it harder for them to lease out their homes for, for tenants. This is just to sort of, um, make sure that the bad faith actors who are, um, renting out properties do not, uh, wield their power over tenants in a impressive way. And so I think we need to look out for the most marginalized here, especially with COVID-19, making housing all the more insecure in Ithaca. And so I very much support Good Cause Eviction. We would love to talk to more members of, uh, of the, uh, common council about it. That's my, that's my spiel.
Okay, thank you very much, George. Our next speaker is Zachary Nguyen.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to once again ask members of the common council and the mayor to call on Governor Cuomo to step down. Uh, I believe this is a sentiment shared amongst the vast majority of your various constituencies, uh, here in Ithaca. Uh, last month I brought up concerns I have about, uh, concerns I have about the makeup of the Reimagining Public Safety Working Group. Uh, common council, uh, at the common council, these concerns were related to the Tompkins County Legislature. Related in addition to the Ithaca Community Police Board as well as the common council. Uh, I'm hoping my specific questions are addressed later in this meeting during the discussion about the Reimagining Public Safety Plan. Uh, I would also like to, uh, speak out against the proposed, uh, right to renew law that is being, uh, put forth by the Ithaca Tenant Union. Uh, among aspects of the proposal is an annual 5% cap on rent increase, uh, when real inflation is somewhere at least around 10%. And this combined with the increase in property taxes, uh, from, you know, the increase of bubbling property values from inflation. Uh, would guarantee at, at least an annual 5% compounding increase in rent, uh, which kind of rapidly bubbles if you do the math. Uh, and it is worth noting that the Ithaca Tenant Union, uh, has previously stood in front of City Hall with chants of housing is a human right and landlords are parasites. So the suggestion that George made that, uh, this isn't to go after landlords, I believe is specious. This is deliberately, uh, targeting individual landlords as well as, uh, property management companies to essentially force them to keep people, uh, within their properties that they no longer want there. And the problem with the perspective of the Ithaca Tenant Union is that private property is a human right, as guaranteed by Article 17 of the Declaration of Human Rights. And this proposed law aims to rob homeowners, landlords and property management companies of their private property rights. And add fur, further burdensome regulations on landlords, big and small. This will inevitably lead to small landlords, uh, removing their properties from the market, leaving fewer units to be rented. Because they are fearful of becoming hostage to tenants and their leases for an indeterminate amount of time. Combining this with the recent CDC, uh, eviction moratorium that is admittedly unconstitutional, uh, when Joe Biden proposed it. Uh, it is probably likely there's a lot of properties that could be being rented right now that are not being done so because the, uh, homeowners and property owners are fearful. Of getting stuck in a situation where they have people who are just not willing to pay and they cannot get rid of them. So, uh, under the proposed grounds for removal, section A, article one of the, uh, Ithaca Tenant Union proposed bill. It actually says, uh, the rent increase could, uh, not serve as grounds for removal regardless of the tenant's prior consent. Which would essentially roll back centuries of contract law where an agreement is an agreement. And, uh, I yield the remainder of my time. I hope you have a wonderful evening. Uh, have a nice day.
Thank you very much. Um, we'll go now to, uh, privilege of the floor. And I know for privilege of the floor, we had two special resolutions, um, that I'd like to suggest we do first before, uh, we do the rest of privilege, including Duxton had a, a presentation and update on behalf of Eric Rosario about reimagining public safety.
And we do, um, have Mr. Slattery here for that resolution as well.
Oh, thank you. Um, shall we begin with that one?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, so this is a resolution, uh, celebration of the life of Donald J. Slattery. Uh, whereas Donald Slattery served in the Ithaca Common Council for 14. Whereas Donald Slattery served in the Utica Common Council for 14 years, overseeing several major historical milestones in the city of Utica, including the development of the Utica Commons, the Utica Youth Bureau, and Cass Park. Whereas Donald Slattery served as the city of Utica's acting mayor and chaired many city working groups and committees during his time on the common council. Whereas he was a tireless advocate for his community, serving on the Greater Utica Recreation Council, the Northside Housing Board, the City of Utica's Planning Board, and the Tompkins County Legislature, where he was also, he also served five years in the United States Naval Reserve. And whereas Donald Slattery spent most of his 91 years in the city of Utica, graduating from Utica High School in 1946, and beginning his career at Cornell University in the stockroom of the campus store, eventually rising to become operations manager. Whereas Donald Slattery had a large and loving family, and is survived by his wife Teresa, their six children, 16 grandchildren, and 17 great-grandchildren, as well as many nieces and nephews. And while he also had many hobbies, including his accomplishments as a handyman who renovated four houses, helped his children with their household repairs, and maintained his castle on Court Street, therefore be it resolved that the Utica Common Council hereby celebrates the life of Donald J. Slattery and orders flags to be held at half-mast for a week in recognition of his significant contributions to the city of Utica and to Tompkins County. And I so move.
Eric here. Is there a second? Second by Graham. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. I just want to add, yes.
And David, I don't, I only have an electronic version of the resolution, but we can put it on city letterhead, and I can get a print version to you and the rest of your family. So thank you for being here.
I'd be very honored, and my mind is thrilled.
Yeah. I'm glad to hear that.
She's getting older and declining a bit, and just hearing that this was happening, and what happened, she was very happy, a lot of her tears, actually. Thank you very much.
I'm so happy to hear it. He quite literally helped build the city into what it is. And of course, your family's fingerprints are all over the city in so many wonderful ways.
They're all over the T-Cat bus.
That's.
I'm getting around the city myself.
Nice, nice. Well, thank you, and we'll make sure you have a copy of it. We can put it on proclamation paper for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
We got a whole wagon of the grocery, and I'm the only one there. Ice cream. Thank you so much.
And keep an eye, keep an eye out, our staff will have the flags down tomorrow.
Thank you, yes, all of them.
Appreciate it. And Duxon?
This is a resolution celebrating the life of Audrey Joakim Cooper. Whereas Audrey Joakim Cooper has made incalculable contributions to the Utica community, having spent most of her life here, decades of which as a resident of the city of Utica's northside neighborhood. Whereas Audrey joined the Greater Utica Activity Center as a receptionist in its earliest days, and worked up to assistant director, managing summer camp and after-school programming, running special events, supervising volunteers, overseeing the budget, forming employment programs such as the Hospitality Employment Training Program, and contributing to many other aspects of this vital community center, serving areas of residents of all ages. Whereas Audrey next went to Family and Children Services in 1980, working in the family court system with children who have suffered trauma, showing them care and compassion that transformed many of their lives. Whereas in 1987, Audrey transitioned to become director at Southside Community Center, an iconic landmark incorporated in 1934 to serve and empower the black and brown community of the Utica area. Whereas in 1990, Audrey joined Community Action Agency, where among other things, she ran a homeless shelter that housed people that other shelters would not serve, and created alongside a police officer and business owner, the West End Breakfast Club, bringing together all segments of community, including law enforcement, mental health services, businesses, and young people to develop more pride in the West End and improve its safety and community. Whereas in perhaps her best-known role, Audrey became director of the Multicultural Resource Center, reviving the organization as it was nearing closure from financial insolvency, organizing cultural events such as the Tudelo Homecoming Festival and First Peoples Festival, connecting youth from rural areas with youth in Utica over areas of racism, classism, bias, creating the annual Sister Friends Celebration of Women, and with Laura Branca and Kirby Edmonds, starting the Talking Circles on Race and Racism, which has connected over 900 participants in an effort to engage people in open and honest dialogue with each other in a safe space, and to begin the process of healing longstanding racial wounds. And whereas Audrey's innumerable other contributions to the community include serving on the Board of Directors of the Downtown Utica Children's Center, serving on the City of Utica's Workforce Diversity Advisory Committee, co-founding in 2013 the Understand to Overcome Initiative to invite community members to better understand race and its role in U.S. history through film, theater, print, and facilitated discussions, being a founding member of the Northside United Neighborhood Association, serving on the City of Utica's Second Ward Democratic Committee, and grilling prospective elected officials as a member of the community leaders of color. And whereas these many accomplishments and others were honored with a Rotary Club of Utica Pride of Workmanship Award in 2012, a Cornell Town Gown Award in 2014, and many other accolades throughout her life. Whereas Audrey regularly expressed pride in her Cherokee, Sandhill, and Syrian ancestry, and the three children, four grandchildren, great-grandchild, sisters, and countless other friends and loved ones who survive her. Therefore be it resolved that the City of Utica Common Council hereby celebrates the life of Audrey Joakim Cooper to recognize her indelible impact on the Utica and Tompkins County community. I so move.
Second by Cynthia Brock. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Thank you, Duxon, for writing that very moving tribute. I know many of us were very close to Audrey, and her passing is just, is a Titanic loss. Would anyone like to say? I don't want to cut off discussion, I know I went straight to the vote on that resolution.
I think like you posted on Facebook, she could be really hard on you, on people. And she was very hard on me, and I took that to mean she did not like me at first, but she became a friend and a great neighbor, and I miss her as well. Just a few months ago, she was still in meetings with us, so it was quite the shock.
Yes, Seth?
Yeah, I'll say the same. I mean, and she was, she was very hard on me as well. I'd say after year five or maybe six of getting to know her, she, she was very sweet to me, actually, and, you know, we had a lot of really wonderful conversations, and she's definitely someone I really looked up to in this community and thought of as, as a mentor, especially just thinking about how to, how to represent the very big and diverse Second Ward. So I was shocked and very sad to hear that she had passed.
Cynthia?
Yeah, Audrey was very much into tough love. She pushed you to be better, to think harder, to think really thoughtfully about each and everything that you do, and especially all the things that you didn't do that you should have done. I had great opportunity to work with her on the Board of GIAC and then also the Workforce Diversity Advisory Committee. I saw her action with the community, her engagement with, with all sectors of, of our population, and to be an outspoken voice when people were fearful to speak. So I'm very appreciative of the time I had to, I had with her, and the insight and the challenge that she posed to me each and every time we met. Grateful for, for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Deb?
I know there was no way to list everything she was involved in in that resolution, but one of my fondest memories and opportunities is being able to serve for many years with her on the annual MLK breakfast and celebration. And she was well before her time in terms of teaching the community, I think, how you really celebrate the life of Dr. King, and really helping our community gel around the kind of education that we should be doing on that day, pushing the committee to not only serve food and come together as a community, but what kinds of topics and themes do we need to be doing to ensure that that legacy is not lost and that we are celebrating that appropriately and using it as an opportunity to educate? And I was honored to serve with her on that committee, and I will miss her dearly.
Yeah, and I think she'll, she'll be remembered as one of the greatest nonverbal communicators of all time. When you did something in a meeting she did not like, you never had to guess about it. And when she was going to take care of you, you never had to guess about that either. And I was, I was 18 when I first met her, and we got to work side by side in Cornell Cooperative Extension. And she just took care of me. She, she will protect you, and she'll be hard on you, but nobody, there was nobody in town that had done more work to earn the right, to demand and expect more, especially of elected officials. Because she taking care of generations and generations of kids at GIAC and at Southside, and had done so much work for our community. And I'm going to miss her. I'm going to miss her very, very much. Very, very much. I should at this point also mention that just recently, we lost another member of our community, Todd Peterson. A horribly sad loss, another person who, who took care of generations of kids. And I think it's hard to explain to people why kickball means so much to Ithacans, you know, anybody who grew up in Utica. They'll talk of they, they still have their favorite memories, their favorite outs they ever got, their favorite home runs they ever kicked. And most communities is not like that. And, and that was all Todd Peterson. In 35 years, he did that. And he still looked 27 years old somehow. And we're just very sorry for his loss and for his family's loss. And I wanted to be sure, I know we all found about, out about that later, so there wasn't the same amount of lead time to do a resolution, but I did want to mention that, that gargantuan hole in the, in the heart of our city. Privilege of the floor. Would anyone else like to, maybe, maybe this is a good moment to ask Duxon. I know Eric was intending to deliver a video for us with an update on reimagining public safety. I believe there's some technical snafus.
I'm sorry, was that last?
I believe there's some technical snafus, is that what happened?
Yeah, and also he's dealing with some family issues, so. Yeah, whenever we're ready, we can, we can do that if Julie can put the slides up.
Yeah.
It's a very brief update. I'll note, too, that we, the, the working group is, is trying to be careful to, you know, we've had different stakeholders ask Eric for, to come to them to give updates, and it's really important that we do everything publicly so that we communicate with one voice. I feel a little nervous because I am, you know, there's a short notice that I was taking over, so apologies, my apologies if I don't have everything, if I can't answer every single question, but, one second. Okay, so next slide. So this is a reminder of, of why we're doing this. So our embattled governor, who I do think should resign, issued Executive Order 203 asking municipalities to, to come up with a plan to reimagine public safety. And so we, as council, ordered that a working group consisting of IPD, city staff, older persons, residents, outside experts, in this case largely the Center for Policing Equity, to outline the structure of a new public safety system and submit recommendations to common council. We set ourselves a September deadline, which, which I'll talk about later. Julie, if you could go back real quick. This mural was done, which is impressed by Ali, was done by the residents at McCormick Center. It's a place that rehabilitates youth, and we thought that there was, it was a moving way to kind of convey what we, the better path that, that we hope to, to come up with out of this. Okay, so next. Eric Rosario was our lead, but Karen Yearwood has joined as co-lead, which has already become really helpful in circumstances like right now, where Eric is indisposed. Karen was able to lead a meeting today, and so we're thankful for, for, for her joining us, too. We have a working group of community members, council, three officers, and, and young people like Mark Juan, who is joining us tonight, and who's been asking really important questions. Technical advisors. In addition to CPE, they will be special guests who have specific content, area expertise. For example, the city attorney, our city HR director, the city controller, the police chief, the city sustainability director, the prosecutor's office, probation and parole, the Tompkins County sheriff, other city and county staff. CPE serves as a thought partner and a logistical consultant to the city of Utica and Tompkins County to identify the needs, coordinate the working group, and support the process. They're process facilitators, mostly. And the community engagement portion will have a focused effort to include vulnerable communities into the reimagining process with extensive representation from BIPOC, black and brown disproportionately policed communities. So so far, we did a two-day onboarding. There were two long days. We did a workshop with the Jazz Leadership Project. This is a leadership and team-building group that took us through some exercises to get to know each other. We identified these different attributes about our, you know, the way we think and approach problems, and, you know, we were all over the map in terms of how we approach solving issues. And so this is a really interesting way to get us to communicate with each other better and understand the, you know, people talk about love languages, we're talking about here about like process languages and how we interact with each other, given our different backgrounds. Mary Tyler went over the history of policing in Utica. Acting Chief Jolie and Sheriff Osborne went over the current state of policing in Tompkins and Tompkins County in Utica. And Eric laid out the statement of work, the goals, the expectations that our group have. So those technical advisors that I mentioned earlier, the experts who will be providing us advice, their onboarding is scheduled for August 16th to 17th. There are several categories of work that we're doing. Delighted call types, meaning how different types of calls are dispatched, staffing, training and equipment, data analysis, and of course, the budget. So they will be broken into subcommittees, but the delineated call types, arguably the most controversial part, or the most important part, the, the piece that will determine success or failure with regard to using armed and unarmed officers, will be worked on by the entire working group. So that will not be a subcommittee thing, the entire task force will be working on that problem. We had a call today to understand how emergency dispatch works, aka 911, so that was really helpful. And go to the next slide. I mentioned communication earlier. I don't have the exact timeline on this, but the plan is to launch a tool that allows community members to submit ideas for recommendation one. We recognize that not everyone has access to the internet, so there will be a way to do it physically and in person as well, or through phone. Next slide. So here's our general timeline. One thing that came up in this process was the scope of the work is enormous, and the number of things that we have to consider are huge. So the, the colors on this chart are various groups, subcommittees. The top one, that dark blue, is the entire group, like I mentioned, the working group, and then these others represent subcommittees and the various timelines for, for completing their work. So I think the thing that'll jump out to us as council who set a deadline for getting work done is that extends beyond September, which is when we had wanted to have an answer to, to what the new apartment would look like. That, given the breadth of the work that was before us, that became quicker and realistic. However, we expect to have estimates and cost-benefit analyses so that we can have by October, when the mayor gives us his budget, some placeholders for, you know, for us to consider as part of the city budget going forward. Not unlike, for example, the hiring of the Sustainability Director a couple budget seasons ago, where, you know, we didn't have every detail about what the position would be like, what the job description would be, but we knew that we wanted someone to oversee that effort, you know, in City Hall. So we'll expect something like that by September, so that we can make those kinds of decisions. In each of these areas, we'll be finding consultants who, in addition to those technical advisors, who are experts in these areas to help us. Yeah, I think that's it for this slide. Next. So as I mentioned, the So, as I mentioned, the call delineation is kind of the root from which everything else follows. So, we need an in-depth understanding of what the community needs and where the resources that we have should be deployed to meet those needs. Once we understand those responsibilities, then we can start determining staffing levels, shift assignments, signing the beat. You know, you saw that there was a data analysis component, and so that'll feed into this as well. And, you know, we spent a lot of time on naming, or at least a lot of discussion on what the naming should be, but that really, I think, will follow, you know, it'll follow after we've determined all the roles and what the actual department will be doing. So, that's going to last. And next slide. Eric is good at trying to motivate us with inspiring language. So, we're pioneers, but we're not alone. We are tasked with building a public safety model that's sustainable and will serve all residents of the Ithaca and Tompkins County. So, we, you know, we're trying to, I think it's come up multiple times, we are looking for a solution that serves the residents, that makes police officers' lives better, who acknowledge that they take on way too many things, for the taxpayer, for everybody. So, the people that law enforcement are currently called on to certainly improve their lives, most of all, that's who, that's why this process started, that's who we should center and remember and focus on as we go through this process. Next slide. And if you have any questions, we have three working group members here and the mayor.
Thank you, Duxton, much appreciated. You were even, I believe, sitting in Eric's seat back when he resigned council for the second ward, so that's very fitting. Any questions for Duxton? Knowing that you have, of course, there are three of you on the working group, so please do, feel free to reach out to Laura, George, Duxton, anytime. Yes, Laura.
Yeah, I would just like to thank Duxton for that terrific update. You may have been nervous, but you did a great job of laying out the work that is before us, the work we've already done. We have spent time on building our working group, which I think is really essential for the task before us. And rather than trying to rush something to meet a deadline, an arbitrarily set deadline, I think it is far better that we take a reasoned and thorough approach, which is what we're doing. So, for my colleagues, not only you have Duxton, George, and myself on the working group, but as was mentioned, Mark Juan is a member of the working group. He is a rising sophomore government major at Cornell, and he's a wonderful partner in this work. So, I very appreciate, very much appreciate him being here tonight, too.
I want to add real quick that Eric's doing a great job. He's the right, you know, just his demeanor and his thoroughness, it's clear he's the right person to lead this.
I agree, and very much appreciate Karen stepping into Graham.
Thank you, thank you, Duxton, for that. You'd mentioned advisors from different areas. Can you tell us, like roughly, how many additional people are kind of going to be involved in giving advice to the working group?
That I don't know. I don't know that anyone knows, but, um, yeah.
Well, I guess I'm, as liaison to the Community Police Board, I know there was some concern, so that was discussed, I hope, and some decisions were made about that.
For sure, that they should be involved, and we've talked about the commission, the Public Safety and Information Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we can go to the rest of privilege of the floor. Yes, Cynthia?
Thank you. I wanted to thank the speakers that came tonight. I also wanted to express my support to, in support of Genevieve and George bringing forward the Good Cause Resolution, or Good Cause Eviction Bill. In May twenty nineteen, before the Ithaca Tenants Union was firmly established, I brought over a member filed resolution asking for city council's support for the state bill, which was the ETPA expansion as well as Good Cause. It is something that I continue to support sincerely. I think residents who have done nothing wrong, they have abided by all the terms of their lease, they have been good tenants, they've paid on time, that they should be protected and guaranteed the right to renew their lease and to be able to reasonably expect a reasonable rent increase. What I have heard from many constituents is you have young professionals or people who move into the community and have to move every year because they are seeing twenty percent increases to their rent, and they have to find a new place. At the end of the year, the rent goes up twenty percent. This is contributing to gentrification, is driving out our residents, it's incredibly expensive. I think that's entirely unreasonable. At the time when the Good Cause Bill was at the New York State Senate, what they proposed as a reasonable rent increase was one and a half times area CPI plus one percent, which I believe in this case would be a five percent. I know that the City of Albany's recent Good Cause legislation was a five percent increase. But if you are going to have something that is consistent over a long period of time, I think tying it to CPI is reasonable. I will say, growing up in the West, I was entirely surprised that New York State does not have tenant protections of this size, of this type. I think it's something that we should definitely push on the state level, and I'd love to see it happen on the city level.
Thank you. Yes, Duxton?
I'll second that, and we'll briefly note that, I didn't know this until recently, but New Jersey, where I was born and raised, has had Good Cause eviction since nineteen seventy-four. I can assure you, as a landlord in New Jersey, I don't want to be a landlord, but I'm still stuck with this house, as a landlord in New Jersey, landlord life is fine with Good Cause eviction. They have navigated this for forty years, so I suspect that we will be fine doing it in Ithaca and New York State as well. Yes, Seth?
So, yeah, so as Cynthia mentioned, I mean, this is something that was considered at the state level and has been sort of debated in Albany for a number of years, but hasn't been enacted. And I think now, the strategy for a lot of housing advocates across the state is to try to do it at the, to push it at the municipal level. You know, I have some issues with the draft, the legislation that the Ithaca Tenants Union has put out, but I did take a look at the legislation that was passed in Albany recently. I think it has a lot of merit, you know, and I would consider something like that here. It's just a question of the best way to move it forward and, you know, if it's, if it means putting on the agenda for the planning committee for us to have a discussion about it and see if it's something we want to circulate in August, I'm willing to do that. I mean, our agendas have been kind of crazy lately. We have a lot on our plates right now, but hopefully it's something we can squeeze onto the agenda in August for discussion.
Thank you, Seth, appreciate it. Further, any other privilege of the floor? Yes, George?
I believe it was two weeks ago tonight, our community lost a wonderful, young fourteen-year-old beautiful girl, Sophia Nickerson, in a car accident. And she was hit, there were, her and her friend were hit by a driver while they were walking from Indian Creek on Route ninety-six. Horrible tragedy. And I'd just like to acknowledge their family and know that we're thinking of them, and she was a student at LACS. I just want to acknowledge her.
Thank you, George. Ready now for the consent agenda? Would anyone like to move? Moved by Steve, seconded by Duxton. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. We'll move now to item five point seven, so Resolution to Authorize Conveyance of Northside Apartments. I'll turn it over to Chair Murtaugh.
Okay, five point seven, a resolution to authorize the conveyance of the Northside Apartments, Overlook Terrace and the Southview Gardens Public Housing Projects for the Ithaca Housing Authority to Ithaca No Housing Development Fund Company Incorporated. Whereas Ithaca Housing Authority owns a number of properties in the city located on the north side and also property located at four twenty-two South Plains Street and three oh four three ten Center Street, whereas the property is presently improved by approximately one hundred and six residential units for low and very income persons and families situated in fourteen two-story apartment buildings and other ancillary improvements on the Northside property, commonly known as Northside Apartments. One two-story apartment building, four one-story apartment buildings, and other ancillary improvements on the Overlook property, commonly known as Overlook Terrace Apartments, and four two-story apartment buildings and other ancillary improvements on the Southview property, commonly known as Southview Gardens Apartments. And whereas the physical condition of the project has become dilapidated and deteriorated over time, if the authority does not have sufficient resources available to remedy such dilapidation and deterioration, whereas the authority desires to redevelop and rehabilitate the project in order to provide the current residents of the project and others with improved, safe, decent, and affordable housing, whereas the infusion of private enterprise and private capital are essential components to such redevelopment and the continued success and long-term viability of the project. Whereas the authority has indicated that the sale and conveyance of the property by the authority to Ithaca NOS Housing Development Fund Company Incorporated to be formed as a New York not-for-profit corporation, which will be organized pursuant to New York State Housing Finance Law, is necessary in order for the project to obtain the benefits of federal low-income housing tax credits and to otherwise accomplish the redevelopment of the project. Whereas the HDFC will be formed for the purpose of providing residential rental accommodations for persons of low income, and Kyuga Housing Development Corporation, an affiliate of the authority, will be its sole member. Whereas this entity will acquire fee title of the property as nominee for the partnership and will convey its equitable and beneficial interest in the property to the partnership and furtherance of the development of the project. And whereas the partnership will redevelop, rehabilitate, beneficially own, maintain, and operate the project as an approximately one hundred eighteen unit housing project for persons of low income at the property, which redevelopment and rehabilitation will include the selective demolition and replacement of existing apartment buildings at the Northside property, resulting in a total of seventeen two-story apartment buildings containing eighty-two residential units being situated thereon. And whereas the HDFC will be the co-general partner of the partnership. And whereas in accordance with the terms and provisions of New York State Housing Law, a sale or lease by a housing authority of all or a portion of a project in order to obtain the benefits of a federal program of assistance for low-income housing is subject to the approval of the local legislative body. Whereas the city desires to encourage a sufficient supply of adequate, safe, and sanitary dwelling accommodations properly planned for persons with low incomes. Whereas in order to facilitate the contemplated redevelopment and rehabilitation of the project, the city desires to confirm its approval of the authority's sale and conveyance of the property to the HDFC as nominee for the partnership. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby authorizes and approves the sale and conveyance of the project by the authority to the HDFC as nominee for the partnership, which sale and conveyance shall be upon such terms and conditions as the authority may deem appropriate. Be further resolved that the mayor of the city is hereby authorized and directed to take any and all actions and execute and deliver any and all documents or instruments that may be necessary or desirable to carry out the intent of the foregoing resolutions. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. And I say move.
Thank you. Seconded by Cynthia. Discussion?
We, I mean, we had a pretty lengthy discussion about this at the planning committee, and we do have representatives from Ithaca Housing Authority here to answer any questions. I realize this is like a pretty complicated transaction, and, you know, we did have a lot of questions at the planning committee, and wouldn't be surprised if people have questions tonight. So, I know that Ithaca Housing Authority representatives are happy to answer those.
Yes, Duxton?
I was wondering if Brenda could briefly go over the relocation plan for the existing residents?
Thank you. I'm sure you all remember Bruce Levine, three D Development, our developer, working on the Rad project for Southview and Overlook, and also the demolition and rebuild at Northside. So, in terms of the relocation, just Northside or all of the properties?
Just Northside, yeah. Those are the ones that are being redeveloped, yeah.
Okay.
So, in fact, just earlier today, we had a meeting with a substantial number of tenants, briefing them on where the process stood. But essentially, very shortly, we'll be giving all the tenants notices of their need to relocate from the property. We will be working with every single one of them to make sure that they have housing in the neighborhood they choose and with the number of bedrooms that they need. Everybody will be getting a tenant protection voucher, which is a Section Eight voucher that they can use anywhere in the city, county, state, wherever they choose to live. The tenants will continue to pay thirty percent of their income towards rent and utilities. The balance will be picked up by the Section Eight voucher. The Ithaca Housing Authority currently has a three-year waitlist to obtain these vouchers, but all the tenants of Northside will be getting them immediately and be able to use them and keep them. When the project is completed, we'll be giving every tenant notice and priority preference to reapply for a new unit at Northside Apartments. They are free to return, or they can just continue living where they want and maintaining their vouchers. But every tenant has been adequately informed. This is our third meeting with tenants. Lindsay, sitting back there, has met with probably about fifty percent of the tenants one-on-one so far, and the tenants who have not met with her, who were in attendance at our meeting earlier today, are making appointments to do so.
And is there like Korean language support and other non-English speaking language support for the people who, to make sure they understand exactly what's happening?
Yeah, indeed. So, at today's meeting, we had a translator who was translating into Burmese and
And Korean.
Korean. And all of our letters are translated as well.
Great, thank you.
Jess, Graham?
Yeah, so I just had a question about these two reformed entities. So, could you just explain a little bit about, I mean, I know they're necessary to get the tax credits, but how are they going to be structured differently or similarly to the housing authority?
Yeah, so right now, the housing, it's public housing, and it's controlled by a declaration of trust from the United States Government to the Ithaca Housing Authority. Upon transfer, there's two entities formed. One is a Housing Development Fund Company that owns the land, and the other is a limited partnership that owns the buildings. The Housing Development Fund Company is controlled by the not-for-profit affiliate of the Ithaca Housing Authority. And that Housing Development Fund Company is also the co-general partner of the limited partnership. The limited partnership is the vehicle that we use in order to bring in the tax credit investor. So, the Ithaca Housing Authority will continue to manage it. The tenants won't notice any difference as far as the staffing goes. The only difference being that instead of writing their rent check to the Ithaca Housing Authority, they'll write it to Ithaca NOS Limited Partnership. And for anyone wondering, NOS just stands for Northside Overlook in Southview.
And just to follow up, so do you have a sense of how long this rehabilitation is going to take overall?
We anticipate starting in early twenty twenty-two. The conversion of Overlook will be no more than nine months. The Southview will be about a year and a couple of months. And the total length for Northside will be thirty-two months, inclusive of the environmental work, the demolition, and the reconstruction. But our plan is to reconstruct those buildings block by block, so as a full block is completed, we'll start moving people in sooner.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, George?
No, Overlook is Hector Street. With a four-ten, four-twelve Overlook Terrace is what's part of the Ithaca Housing Authority. Overlook at West Hill is what's across from the hospital.
Okay, so what are you planning on doing with the Southside and Hector Street property?
Both of those properties will be rehabilitated. So, the tenants that live there are just being temporarily So the tenants that live there are just being temporarily relocated. They'll be off-site for about six months and then brought back. And when we talk about rehabilitation, we'll be dealing with any environmental conditions that exist, making them more energy efficient, more handicap accessible, upgrading the finishes, appliances, kitchens, bathrooms. They'll be essentially new. You're welcome.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And thank you for all your support getting us to this point. This has been a long process.
Yes, it's very exciting. An exciting future for those properties. So we'll go now to City Administration Committee. I do want to note the time, just for everybody, we're already at 10 minutes to 8, because of the long presentations and public comment, and we do have quite a few voting items, so stay fresh. And just a heads up, so Doug with the new 4.1.
Yep, our new 4.1, pulled from consent, I'll just read quick here. Resolution authorizing funding for Mark Sully Project, Transportation Federal Aid Project. This is the fund appropriation. Whereas the city has been awarded a discretionary build grant from the U.S. DOT for the Quga Waterfront Revitalization Project, and whereas the project is eligible for funding under U.S. Code and the application calls for the apportionment of the cost of the project to be ratioed 50% federal, 50% non-federal, whereas the city desires to advance the project by making a commitment of 100% of the non-federal share of the cost for planning, scoping, and preliminary engineering and design. Whereas preliminary engineering and design are exempt from environmental review, therefore be it resolved that common council approves the above-subject project, be it further resolved that we authorize the city to pay 100% of the federal and non-federal share for the project, be it further resolved that the sum of 1.5 million is hereby appropriated from the issuance of serial bonds, be it further resolved that council creates capital project number 887, Quga Waterfront Revitalization Project, be it further resolved in the event that the full federal and non-federal share costs of the project exceed, council will convene to appropriate the excess amount, be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized to execute all necessary agreements, and the Superintendent of Public Works is authorized to execute all necessary certifications or reimbursement requests. And be it further resolved that the project be undertaken with the understanding that the final cost of the project to the city will be roughly 50% of said portion, currently estimated at $750,000 of the 1.5 million authorized for this portion, and monies, in monies and in-kind services as managed by the Superintendent of Public Works and monitored by the City Controller. Be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution be filed with the New York State Commissioner of Transportation, and be it further resolved that this will take effect immediately.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Graham Persick. Any discussion?
I think Tim is here as well, so just, we did provide a quick summary of the evolution of this. We did talk about it at November City Administration. Now that we actually, thanks to the work of the Planning Department, have received the grant, there was suggestions for a modification of what we actually do with the funding. It reduced the project a little bit, just to talk about only project scope and not the full construction details of the project, and I'm sure Tim has more details. But if anyone has questions, or if anyone has questions on the funding, I don't know if Steve is there, Steve.
Yeah, so any questions? Yes, Cynthia.
So thank you for obliging me. The original memo just included the intersections of Day, Third, and Fifth, but the current memo talks about extending to the inlet. So does this include an analysis of the Meadow, Fulton, Buffalo Court, Seneca, Taganic intersection? Is that included in this?
So the, in our conversation with Federal Highway, they wanted to be sure that we wouldn't drop any of the big three concepts that were included in the grant application, that is, looking at Route 13 and creating an urban boulevard, the extension of Fifth Street, and pedestrian and bicycle enhancements for crossings of Route 13. Our intention is to have a fairly open scope and planning process and public process to try to define what the scope of work ultimately will be. As I've been talking to other people about the work, people have asked, you know, could we study an overpass on Route 13? Could we study an underpass on Route 13? And I've been giving everybody the answer of yes, we can give a good, hard look at just about any ideas that we come up with on how to reach the goals of connecting the downtown and neighborhoods to the waterfront district, and thinking about the transportation infrastructure that we need in the waterfront district for access and mobility. Right now, we do not have, the grant did not include, the grant application did not include looking at Meadow and Fulton and the cross streets over there. And since there's been so much work done recently there, I don't see that we necessarily need to include that in work under the build grant. That said, if there's an interest in doing that, then we could accommodate that in the scope. But I think that's not really a hot topic for the build grant quite so much as the development that's already been proposed on the waterfront district and some of the other work that's been looked at for mitigations.
Thank you. This price tag seems awfully high to me. How does this compare to other projects? Is it, is it because that the city portion is 50% and not 25? Is that why the city portion is 3/4 of a million dollars?
The reason that the city portion is 50% and not 20% is because of the way the grant application was prepared. The program that funds this is the build grant, is just super extremely competitive nationwide. And so an overmatch over the typical 20% match is often required in order to be successful in this grant category. But the reason that we're looking at a $750,000 city cost is because we might be contemplating upwards of $15 million worth of construction ultimately. To reconstruct Route 13 from purity to Fall Creek, to build a new road or any of those things, those are all massive undertakings. And so this is really trying to be like, a kind of a chance of a career, a chance of a lifetime to really transform the Route 13 corridor and the waterfront district, and that's why it's an expensive project at this time.
Okay. One more design detail, then I have a question for Steve. In the memo and in some recent drawings, I've seen the, I believe it's the Fifth Street intersection, is that to be a complete crossing, or is it going to be a T junction with the Carpenter Park project?
There really isn't a decision as far as the build grant goes. The recent conversations with council related to the litigation for the waterfront projects has shown an interest in having it just be a T intersection and not being a full four-way intersection. The build grant, I don't think was, you know, the one that was written, that was far before these conversations related to development projects. So I think it was probably looking at a four-way intersection at the time, but that's not determined at this point. We have a, we're just getting ready to begin a process.
Thanks, Tim. I know you have activity going on in the background. Okay, so for Steve, so this is, I understand that this is to be funded through a bond, is that correct? Is this a short-term bond? And where does this place us with our debt load, which is something to consider?
Yeah, so that we would, we would bond this at this point in time, and we would do basically a series of short-term notes on this. And actually, as the study is, it would be a five-year lifespan. However, if we do go into construction with this project, then we can take the rest of the funds and spread it over the life of the actual construction project, so say 15 to 20 years after that point. So roughly, in the first part of this bond issuance, you would be looking at about $150,000 annually. And if we were to issue these funds this year, that would start just an interest payment in 2022, and then full principal and interest in 2023. And as far as the debt limit, this wouldn't put much of a dent in it. We're about 72% of our debt limit expanded, exhausted at this point, so this wouldn't do too much to that. And we would look at the possibility of maybe funding this in a different way through, you know, some of our stimulus funds possibly down the line, depending on how we end up using those funds, so.
Okay, thank you. So beginning in 2020, so that 150, that's principal and interest, or is that the initial 2022 payment?
That would be full principal and interest, so you're talking next year, if we were to issue these funds this year, it would be like $5,000 or so, yeah, in interest.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, George.
This is a question for Tim. Tim, does committing to this planning stage, does that also commit us somehow to changing Buffalo Street to a one-way street?
It does not commit us to that at all.
Thank you.
I thought you were going to ask something different. It does commit us to getting something to construction within a decade, but it could be as simple as building sidewalks.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of what you said.
It does not commit us to anything on Buffalo Street. If you begin a federal aid project, there is a general rule of you need to get something to construction within 10 years. So there would be an expectation that something would get to construction eventually. It could be as simple as building sidewalks on Port of Route 13. Doesn't have to be a full street reconstruction.
Thanks.
Sure.
Are we ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. 10 to 0. Thank you. Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, have a good night.
All right, our new 4.2 is room tax, establishing revenue and expenditure accounts. Whereas the City of Ithaca Hotel Room Occupancy Tax was established earlier this year to support the Downtown Conference Center project, and whereas the city has executed an agreement with Tompkins County for the county to pay the city 4% of the county room tax collections for 30 years, beginning in 2021, whereas bond financing for this project has closed, and whereas Downtown Ithaca Local Development Corporation has been established to own and manage the conference center, and whereas Fiscal Oversight Committee with the majority city representation has reviewed and approved the 2021 room tax budget, and whereas a conference center operator, ASM Global, has been engaged and has provided the LDC with a budget, and whereas the recommended budget for 2021 capitalizes various reserve accounts, and whereas the City Controller is budgeting $20,000 in 2021 for room tax financial administration, and the 2021 room tax budget also includes $100,000 contribution to the city funnel reserve account, and whereas after subtracting 2021 room tax expenses, including city and LDC expenses, from the combined budgeted tax revenues, including city room tax revenues and county conference center room tax payments, an unallocated room tax reserve balance of $58,931 is anticipated, and whereas a successful conference center project will be an asset for the city, resulting in increased room tax and sales tax revenues. Therefore be it resolved that the City Controller is authorized to establish payment and accounting procedures for room tax revenues and expenses in support of the conference center project in alignment with conference center funding agreements and standard city budgeting and accounting practices, and be it further resolved that the following revenue and expense accounts are established in the 2021 city general fund budget. It lists the various accounts that need to be created and resolved, that in no case will 2021 room tax expenses exceed 2021 room tax revenues.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Graham. Discussion or questions?
Yeah, all this is, is just essentially to the administrative side of what we already voted on for the room tax. I know Tom is here for questions, but we toyed about putting this on consent or not, but we thought it was helpful to have everybody understand that this is just the next step in the process of establishing that room tax revenue for the conference center. And Tom's here for questions, or Steve.
Thank you. Any questions? Demolition is on its way, and it's quite interesting to watch every day next door. Yes, Dexon.
This is actually for later, sort of, but why does Steve get two votes on this oversight thing?
Yeah.
Did you hear that?
Yeah.
Can you repeat it to me? I can't hear.
Oh, you couldn't hear?
No.
Why do I get two votes?
Oh, why does Steve get two votes?
Because I'm very powerful, is that what?
The Fiscal Oversight Committee has nine members, and the other four members are non-city members, representing the other funding partners. And because the city is providing a financial assistance agreement for the bonds, and therefore has, you know, carrying the risk in the project, ultimately, we felt it important that the city have majority representation. There were, you know, four staff positions that seemed like the best fit for the seats, and so one of them needed to have two, two votes, and Steve is the money man, so he gets the two votes.
Yes.
He's very trustworthy as well.
I never get to vote, so.
That's right. He's making up for years and years of not voting on anything, ever.
I'd love to watch you, and under what circumstances would you split your votes? That's what I want to know.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll never have to find out. All right, any other questions? Okay. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
And I think the rest stuff, CA, has been moved to the end of the meeting, so we're just on to Steve, I think.
For the Controller's Report.
Yeah, so I'll be real quick. We're very busy down in our office with many things, but budget development for 2022 is one of the main focuses now. Departmental budgets will be due at the end of this week to us. We are scheduling budget meetings now with the mayor and myself and the department heads, and that will, those will take place starting in mid-August and going through early September. The capital review project committee has been meeting, and they continue to meet, we're winding that down, so hopefully we'll have recommendations soon on the capital projects. So lots of budget development currently occurring, and that's just one, one aspect of all the busy work that we have down in the Controller's Office. Just quickly, on the 2021 activity, sales tax collection, we, to date, have collected $7,070,000. So as I mentioned in previous reports, after a very slow start due to COVID, we are now seeing that most of our recent collections have been above budget and doing pretty well at this point in time. We did budget in 2021, $13,842,000. We do expect, unless there, knock on wood, there's any changes to, you know, the Delta variant making changes to the economy in the near future, or, you know, supply and demand changes other than what we've seen so far, inflationary factors, we do expect that we would meet that budget this year. So that's good news. Certainly, it's a good rebound from where we were a year ago, and so we're running about 10% ahead of last year's activity. So it's certainly, it's rebounded sooner than I anticipated at this point, so definitely good news. Parking revenues, we're still off on our budget. We're about approximately $350,000 off budget now if we were to finish the year, so hopefully we can make up some ground. Of course, lots of construction in and around the city downtown area, so maybe that has something to do with it. And of course, we did budget for the Green Street parking garage closure, but parking is definitely taking its time rebounding in the city. Building permit revenue, we did increase our 2021 budget significantly based on activity that we anticipated would occur during 2021. So far, we have So far, we have collected $1,100,000. So we are starting, starting to see a ramp up in, in those revenues as a result of the, you know, construction season well underway at this point. So hopefully, we'll get close to that budget. And lots of work on the federal stimulus funds. We have just received information on the reporting requirements that we, we will have to do. In fact, we'll, our first report is due at the end of this month, I believe, so we'll start to work on that. And as I mentioned previously, that's just another layer of activity that this, these funds bring to us. But again, we have lots of time to spend these monies, so it's wise that we take our time and, and decide how, plan efficiently, effectively on how to spend these funds moving forward. So our first reporting, probably in the first half of this year, will be just reporting that we've received the money and haven't spent a whole lot of it, and that's fine. Certainly, again, it's prudent to be wise in our spending of that money because it's a one-time shot. And, you know, we could get in serious trouble if we, we put it into the wrong areas of, of spending. So, and also, they can take the money back if we spend it inappropriately. So we'll continue to work through that process with a lot of infrastructure work that will take up a lot of those funds as we move forward. So I think with that, I will end my report, because I know we have a big agenda left, so.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any questions for Steve? Yes, Cynthia?
Well, at some point, perhaps, not now, but I would like to know more about what types of projects in the infrastructure we are looking at allocating funding for. I know many municipalities, as was mentioned earlier, are looking at water and sewer infrastructure. So if we could get an idea of those, what seems to be rising to the top?
Yeah, and so you'll probably see that once our capital project review committee is completed with their tasks. So I believe we have a special meeting.
Yeah, that was a segue to my reminder, which was how I was going to wrap up CA, which is make sure you've all blocked off September 29th. That was included in your budget dates, but we had set that date aside to do capital projects. And then a couple of meetings ago, we announced that the ARP A funding was going to be wrapped into the capital project process. So September 29th, you should see all that information.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Steve. Appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
Appreciate helping us move along. There are still, I don't want folks, Deb is always running a tight ship, but we do still have those three executive sessions at the end of the meeting, so we are still running behind as a heads up, as we move into planning in the 5.1.
5.1 is the Fourth Amendment to the HUD Entitlement Citizen Participation Plan, COVID-19 amendment. Whereas the Citizen Participation Plan establishes the City of Ithaca's procedures for involving the public in development of the HUD entitlement program. Whereas in response to the pandemic and mandated social distancing, the Department of Housing and Urban Development issued a mega waiver covering HUD-administered programs that included flexibility regarding citizen participation. Whereas the City of Ithaca seeks to establish expedited procedures necessary to quickly and effectively administer federal funding made available to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic in accordance with the HUD mega waiver. Whereas an annual action plan contains a description and budget for individual activities to be undertaken with funding made available to the City of Ithaca through the HUD entitlement program. Whereas the HUD mega waiver identifies a minimum five-day public comment period to include a virtual public hearing within, with opportunity for citizens to comment in real time, provides reasonable notice and opportunity for comment to meet citizen participation requirements for consolidated plans and action plans. Whereas the applicability of temporary COVID-19 pandemic amendments to the Citizen Participation Plan expire on July 31st, 2021 through the federal emergency. Though the federal emergency may extend beyond the expiration date, now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council for the City of Ithaca hereby adopts a Fourth Amendment to the City of Ithaca HUD Entitlement Citizen Participation Plan dated April 23rd, 2020, to extend the applicability of expedited public participation procedures in accordance with HUD-issued waivers for the following funding. That's the CDB-GCV grant, Home American Rescue Plan grant, fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 community development block grants, fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 home grants. And I say move.
Thank you. Second by Laura. Any discussion? No questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? And that carries unanimously.
Okay, now we're on to the 5.2, which is the Inlet Island Urban Renewal Project. They authorize transfer of city-owned properties to the IRA. This is just a declaration of lead agency, so I'll just read the resolved. Resolved that the Common Council of the City of Ithaca hereby declare itself as lead agency for the environmental review of this proposed action. And I say move.
Thank you. Second by Laura. Discussion? All those in favor? And that carries unanimously.
5.3 is the Inlet Island Urban Renewal Project Environmental Review. Resolved that the City of Ithaca Common Council is lead agency in this matter, hereby determines that circumstances warrant a segmented review of the contingent property transfer from the other stages of the proposed urban renewal project, and that subsequent environmental review during the site plan review process will be no less protective of the environment. Be it further resolved that the City of Ithaca Common Council hereby determines that the proposed action will result in no significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration for purposes of Article 8 of the Environmental Conservation Law be filed in accordance with state law. And I say move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Steve Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor? That carries unanimously.
All right, 5.4 is the action itself. I'll try to, I'll try, I'll do my best to summarize this, I realize it's long. Whereas the IRA and the City of Ithaca collectively own approximately three acres of land on Inlet Island. Whereas an urban renewal project has been proposed by Finger Lakes Development, oh, sorry, that was proposed by Finger Lakes Development, failed to get a Common Council endorsement in 2008. Whereas in 2020, the IRA has received two unsolicited proposals for development at the project site. Whereas the IRA and Common Council rescinded the 2006 preferred developer and sponsor status of Finger Lakes Development LLC. To clarify that the IRA will use a competitive process open to all developers to propose conceptual development plans for the site. Whereas the IRA issued a request for expressions of interest, RFEI, for proposals. Whereas the objective of the RFEI process was to identify if any respondent's schematic plan and development program offers sufficient community benefits to gain conceptual approval from both the IRA and Common Council. Whereas the IRA sought an urban renewal project that will improve the physical, social, and economic characteristics of the project site and surrounding area in accordance with the city's waterfront plan, which includes, which encourages the following land use objectives: mixed-use development, housing opportunities at all income levels, public access to the waterfront, better multimodal connections, vibrant waterfront. Whereas the city, the IRA received responses from three, there are three proposals: Waterfront Alchemy LLC Strategic Elements, Finger Lakes Development LLC, and Visim Development Group LLC. Whereas at its June 2021 meeting, the IRA affirmed its Economic Development Committee's recommendation by selecting the conceptual development plan submitted by Finger Lakes Development LLC as the top-ranked development plan. Whereas the IRA further concluded that the FLD proposal offered strong potential to improve the physical, social, and economic characters of the project site and surrounding area, in particular, the following: commitment from the developer to share environmental cleanup costs, clarification of Finger Lakes Boating Center's commitment to make improvements in terms of visual access and limited boat storage, commitment by the developer to address the U.S. Coast Guard auxiliary's need to maintain its water access and continue operations. Whereas to indicate conceptual support to pursue an urban renewal project with FLD based on their conceptual development proposal, the IRA requests the City of Ithaca Common Council provide the IRA with site control of certain city-owned properties on Inlet Island. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Ithaca Common Council hereby authorizes transfer of the following city-owned properties on Inlet Island on the, to, to the Ithaca Urban Renewal Agency via an option agreement for the purpose of structuring a proposed property sale and development agreement with Finger Lakes Development LLC to undertake an urban renewal project subject to approval by Common Council. And then the properties are listed. There's four of them. The former Aguea Fuels property, the property located at 446 Tagannick Boulevard, discontinued segment of the old Tagannick Boulevard, and 508 Tagannick Boulevard, subject to acquisition from New York State. Be it further resolved that the purchase option agreement may only be exercised upon Common Council approval of an Inlet Island Urban Renewal Project, be it further resolved that the mayor's subject to review by the city attorney, is hereby authorized to implement this resolution, including execution of any and all instruments necessary to execute an option agreement with the IRA. And I say move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Steve Smith. Discussion? Yes, yes, Seth?
So there is, there's a pretty lengthy description of the, of the project in the agenda pack. I mean, the thing that, this came up with the planning committee, I think we wanted to stress now, is that this is really in its early stages because it still has to go through the negotiation with the IRA. So take any sort of concept drawings with a grain of salt at this point. I mean, really what we're doing with this action tonight is, is choosing a preferred developer. And I know that Steve flashes here, if there are any questions that people, people have.
Thank you. Any questions? George?
I think this proposal was the best of the three that were considered by the IRA. It's no secret that I think it's too big. I think the developers themselves share that thought, at least in part. The unknown is how much it's going to cost to clean up the site. I'm encouraged by the willingness of the developers to listen to ideas about making a project with, that's smaller and with less impact. So I, I'm encouraged by that, and I believe I'm going to vote for this.
Thank you, George. Yes, Graham?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, as Seth said, this is early stages, and I, I definitely think that the initial drawings are encouraging, particularly the fact that we're having a lot of affordable housing in that area. I think this is an interesting project. But I certainly am concerned about the, the size of the buildings. I mean, I, I noticed that some of the pictures that were included are maybe something like Amsterdam, or you've got different-sized windows and different materials and stuff like that. So my understanding is that we will have a chance to look at some more detailed plans at some stage in the future. That's this option to, yeah, okay. So I just wanted to clarify that because, you know, as, as George pointed out, the developers are apparently willing to consider different options for the building size. I mean, right now, the, the buildings I see are, to me, are inappropriate for a waterfront position. I mean, in terms of the, they're just two blocks, basically. Now, I know this is an initial sketch, but, you know, having more articulation, having a bit more interest, and there's a mention of materials and stuff like that. But some of the pictures are of the panels that we see in many new buildings. So, you know, I mean, I want to emphasize that I think this is an exciting project, and I'll certainly support it at this stage on the understanding that there'll be a lot of work in terms of the design and perhaps some reduction in the, the mass of both of these buildings, if it's possible. I'd definitely like to see that because this is a really important area for development, obviously. So I just wanted to make those comments on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. Yes, Seth?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, Duxson and I met with some Washington Park residents last night at a community meeting, which was nice because it's not something we've been able to do for quite a while. But we actually talked about this project and, and also the Agora project, which is nearby pretty extensively. And it was interesting just to hear, I mean, the thing that we heard overwhelmingly was a concern that for public access to the waterfront, I mean, that's what we're hearing over and over from people, is that, you know, the, being able to, to walk and bike to the waterfront, and also the ability for, like, to put a canoe in or put a kayak, just to make sure that there's an opportunity to do that. You know, and looking through this proposal, I, you know, I've been encouraged that there, there, you know, I see that in the, in the development plan. The other thing I mentioned at, at the planning committee that is a concern for me personally is just making sure that there's enough active uses at the site to really draw people because I think what I worry about is, you know, if you don't have that ground floor active use and there isn't a reason for people to come there, you're going to end up with a lot of green space where there's just nobody there. So I think those are probably my two biggest concerns, just making sure that we have the public access to the waterfront and that there's like a draw for people. You know, one thing I really, I really like about this, this project is the support for the existing businesses that are there, and also, of course, the affordable housing. I think INHS does really great projects, and, you know, the buildings are always nicely designed and they look good, and so I think, I was really excited to see that they're on board.
Yeah, I agree. Cynthia, and then Laura?
Yeah, as part of my work on the Water Resources Council, we created a boating map that provided a guide to boaters on Keogah Lake. And one of the things that became very clear is that there's very little support for boating on Keogah Lake. And so being able to maintain that and support the, the repair and storage facilities and, and stores that support boating and docking of the boats in and out, taking them in and out, all of that, I think, is really essential. I think that's important. I, I agree that, I like how this enhances access to the waterfront. I'm definitely very committed to seeing paddle access being provided to the public. So there's a lot to this that I, I really do like. I, I am disappointed, and, and perhaps, as was mentioned, that, that there's more opportunity to provide this at the IRA. I thought that this resolution would be the opportunity for council to say explicitly to the IRA what we are looking for in this project. And incorporation of active use is important. This, this is such a unique parcel. And to be able to have small businesses, small storefronts, really add vitality for community members, for visitors along the waterfront, there's no other place you can do that than right here. And, and right now, it's not incorporated in this concept. I'd love to see a direction in this resolution that would require it to be there. And all the other things can, can be negotiated. I, I am a little concerned that it seems like the, the island is essentially becoming a big parking lot to serve the entire area. It, it was distracting to me to see the presentation commingled with development ideas of properties across the Barge Canal. It, it seemed to me that it demonstrated that, that this parcel was tied to those development projects as a way to provide parking for adjacent development projects. I, I'd like to see this be a bit more creative and more engaging than, than what is presented.
Thank you. I think it was Laura next? Yes?
Thank you. I am supportive of this project for at least two reasons. One, the affordable housing building, the partnership that the developer has worked on with INHS, and we know that INHS has a very good record of providing and managing quality, affordable housing buildings. And my understanding is the building they may be considering, and, and again, as has been said, what's in the resolution right now is conceptual, it's not final design. But we can look around at some other INHS buildings, whether it's Breckenridge or 210 Hancock, and see very attractive, appealing, affordable housing buildings, and so I'm pleased with that. I'm also really intrigued by the home tell concept that I imagine is going to be very popular and appealing. It offers some alternatives to traditional. It offers some alternatives to traditional hotels or possibly Airbnb. I do agree with Cynthia in that I was confused initially in reading the proposal with the co-mingling of the development ideas for across the inlet. But I just kept reminding myself that what we are charged right now with looking at is the development on Inlet Island. And I think this is creative. I think also, there is some storefront, some small storefront active use, actually on the island. Donna and I took a walk because I needed to visually walk the space. And there, there are some shops that could be further developed that are one and two story.
They're not on this parcel.
They're not on this parcel, but they're adjacent. And if we're looking at that end, that area of the West End, I think there is some, some active use there. That, that's my point. Thanks.
Thank you. So I have Donna, then George, then Duxon.
Like some of the others, I think that this proposal was the best of the three presented, but I still have a few qualms. I, I agree with some, I agree that it's a little bit too massive and I hope, but I understand that developers have, have financial constraints because of the environmental remediation and the cost of the project. But I still hope that perhaps it could be made less massive. I had originally agreed with the point that we needed, that it would have benefited from active first floor, ground floor use, but after that forced march over there with my colleague, I, I, I retracted my view because there are already three restaurants there. There's a fourth, a few cafes, cafe at Island Fitness, and there are some little shops along the way, so, and they're, it's all very compact. So I'm not sure that additional ground floor active use is all that important. And there was another point I wanted to make, and what was it? Oh, yes, I remember now. It was in our presentation at P E D C that Chris Prue said that when they were talking about parking, they wanted to draw some compromise between a lot of activity that would draw parking and the need to reduce parking. And I thought, oh, that's right. If you have more shops and more restaurants, as much as we promote non-vehicular access, we're still going to have the need for more parking. So that's also what convinced me that asking for more ground floor active uses is not all that important to me.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna. Next is George, then Duxon?
Actually, I like the affordable housing component more than I like the home tell. If, if there's a INHS apartment complex there, I think the need for ground floor retail, locally owned, mom and pop stuff increases because I'm talking about like more affordable type of restaurants or, or even like hot dog stand, ice cream. And if, if, if these massive buildings are scaled back, there's more room for that type of development. And it could face, face the water. So I think those ideas should be encouraged. Inlet Island is, is different than City Harbor, it's different than Cherry Street, it's where people go. And for the west side of town and beyond, it's, it's really where people go after work or, and I think that, that use should be encouraged. And I know parking's going to be a problem. Whatever scale this is, it's going to put pressure on the local businesses that are there now. It's going to put pressure on the intersection of Buffalo and Tagannick, which is already one of the worst intersections in town. So I like the project. I think it would be better at a more modest scale with, with a few more uses.
Thank you. Duxon?
I don't have a problem with the scale, but I do agree with Seth and Cynthia that active use should be part of the, the project. So the difference, in my view, from the, and I spend a lot of time here because of, of the gym, I go there several times a week. Difference between the areas that we're talking about redeveloping versus the existing shops is that, you know, when I think about waterfront areas that I enjoy, the path is along the water and then the stores are on the other side of the path, so that you are enjoying that retail experience. You know, I grew up in South Jersey where the boardwalk is along the ocean and then the shops are, are inland. And so you don't get that on, on the other, you know, the retail that you're talking about, Donna. I'll grant you that Kelly's and the Dock, they have outdoor seating on the water and that is nice, but in terms of the pedestrian experience, you, you don't have that. And so I, I do think that, you know, I see people hanging out on the lookout point all the time. It would be phenomenal to me to have an experience where people walk these trails along the water and are able to, to do stuff, other than just, just looking out. So I am interested, actually, in, in kind of codifying that, although I would like thoughts from, from Nels or Steve, how they feel about such a thing.
Thank you. Yes, Seth, and then Cynthia, and then we'll, we'll see if we've got consensus on a vote.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, there's really two reasons why I think active use is, is a good idea. I mean, one, George touched on this, but it's an economic development thing. I mean, you create more opportunities for businesses, which means more employment in the city. And honestly, there is a lack of affordable retail spaces for, especially for people that are trying to start up businesses. So I think that could be a real opportunity here. And the second is that it just, it draws people, and I think that's the reason we have an active use requirement in the downtown, is when you have a residential building and, and there's no, no commercial uses on the ground floor, I mean, it can kind of create like a dead space. You know, I always think about like City Center, which I think in general is a good building, and, you know, it's great that Ale House is going to be moving in there hopefully eventually, and the C T B is in there. But, you know, half of the building, if you're walking along State Street, is a gym on the ground floor. And if you just think like, what if that was actually, you know, a, a retail space or a cafe or something, provide jobs for people and also opportunities for the public to go in there. So I think that's kind of the vision that I have for this area, is just kind of creating more of those types of spaces to attract people. And then the other thing I just wanted to say quickly about INHS, you know, I think, you know, the scale of the building, and I understand the, the discomfort with height, you know, particularly along the waterfront, but I, I do think, you know, especially when it's affordable housing, I feel, I, I'm not as concerned about the height because, I mean, we have a real issue with the lack of housing, as we all know, but we put, in particular, we have a real problem with the lack of Section Eight housing in the city or Section Eight eligible housing. And these big projects that INHS build, they make a tremendous difference in that because it means that Section Eight holders can afford to live in the city. And again, as we all know, that there's, there's tons of benefits to that. You're, you're close to jobs, you're, you're close to amenities, so. So I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm less concerned about the scale when it comes to affordable housing.
Thank you. Next Cynthia, and then Graham.
Yeah, I agree. And it, it's interesting, you know, when we've talked about first floor active use in the past, and we've mentioned it in the downtown area and in College Town. I mean, College Town has very little to no parking, but we didn't hesitate to institute a ground floor active use requirement in College Town because we were interested in adding to the vibrancy of, of that area. So I don't think that, that parking should be a consideration here where we don't have this conversation when we're talking about College Town or other areas of the city, which we already think of as, as a vibrant area that we want to maintain and promote. So I, I hope that we expand our thinking on that in, in Let Island.
Thank you. Graham?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just respond to Seth's comment. I mean, yeah, I agree. Affordable housing is absolutely important and, and critical, but I don't think we should just abandon that to kind of, let's say, not, or not as good a design as we can get. And if that means changing the price that the developer's paying for the land, then I think we should consider that because, you know, I, I don't want to stigmatize affordable housing as, okay, there's a bad design there, it's affordable housing, here's a really, you know, a different, what are they called, hotels or something? That's, you know, upmarket design. I mean, I think that stigmatizes affordable housing. So as much as possible, I'd like us to be flexible and get as much good design in affordable housing as we, we can. And that goes to materials, especially in such an important area. Secondly, I'll just, I'm, I'm looking at the overview here again, and there is a lot of surface parking, and I definitely would like to see the impact of that minimized in terms of Heat Island. We're talking about having pedestrians and people moving around. It's important, I think, for us to think about how we can reduce the impact of, of this surface parking, whether it's through more trees or, I mean, I've seen some projects that actually incorporate solar panels across surfing, or surface parking, which, you know, obviously generates electricity, but also keeps the cars cooler as well. So, I mean, if the project could think about something like that, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. George?
Just briefly to Seth's point, one, one thing I was very encouraged by when I spoke with Joe Bowes of INHS, is that, I mean, they're so skilled at, at putting together projects that can get significant grants, like the, the nine percent is the, is the cream of the crop, and they know how to do it. And he, he said that one possibility, I mean, he was not averse to making a smaller project if, if he could manage it. And one thing he's talked about was making it part of a scattered site project, which they, which they do now on other ones of their properties with, with apartments on another site in the city. And that would, that would be part of their stated goal, which is to make affordable housing in small and medium sized parcels throughout the city. So there are options that would not reduce the amount of affordable housing. And one thing I'm, I'm going to ask about later is, some of these apartments are 120% whatever they call it.
AMI.
AMI. So that, I'm wondering about that. I'm going to ask questions about that, but not tonight.
Thank you. Are there any more questions tonight? Yes, Rob?
Yeah, thanks. I'm also supportive of the idea of, of the ground floor active use. A couple, a couple of things, I mean, especially when we think of it the way Duxon described it and, and how there's a, you know, waterfront access, and then on the other side of that is the ground floor. So, so two things to point out. One is, you know, I, I agree with colleagues who think, you know, there's already some of that there now, but most of that exists in properties that have yet gone through this kind of development. So we want to make sure that if we set a precedent here, it will be maintained as we go into other possible development projects, or at least enough of it. And then the second part of that is, Cynthia, I think you suggested that maybe there needs to be language in the resolution to confirm that? And I'm curious if you have a suggestion of where that is? And also if our, if we as colleagues think that's, that's required, or is it sufficient as is and our processes can hold the developers accountable to this in the future?
Yes, Steve?
My, my only concern with requiring an active street use would be if that comes at the expense of affordable housing units. So I, I would be in support of an active street use if it came with the insurance that that wouldn't reduce the total number of affordable housing units that we would be netting.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I think there's also, though, an opportunity to, drafting on the floor is tough. I think I saw Cynthia flipping through the pages to see if we can add an amendment in there. I don't know if it would, would please the council to just convey this information to the IURA and say that it was a pretty clear sense of the board, really interested in active uses, ground floor uses, and don't want to see a trade off between affordable housing, as Steve just said, but still, you know, seeing those ground floor commercial spaces were important, if that would satisfy council as opposed to having to draft something right now. Yes, Cynthia?
Perhaps we could add it as a bullet point to the second to less whereas, and add a, a bullet point commitment by the developer to incorporate ground floor active use and maintain proposed number of affordable housing units? I'm just throwing it out there.
Yes, Donna?
I'm fine, oh, damn it. I'm fine with your suggestion of just conveying to the IURA that that's our intention.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. And I know that Nels is here. I, I am also here, and Laura's here, and we are all at the IURA every, every month, so we can convey that.
I, I'd like to know from Nels if, if that has any weight with the IURA, a statement like that, or whether it has to be codified.
Because the project has to come back to common council for our final approval, your recommendations are going to be very strong to the IURA, I think. I mean, they need to, to develop a project that would gain a majority's support of the common council. So hearing these input is, is helpful because it helps provide direction. And they know what they need to do to bring a project back that can get approval.
Yes, Cynthia?
Due to the timing, it may be next year.
Correct.
So I would suggest incorporation of it into the resolution at this point now.
So do you like to move what you just suggested?
Incorporation of a, a fourth bullet point, of which I believe I said, commitment to, by the developer to include ground floor active use and maintain proposed number of affordable housing units.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Duxon. Any discussion on the amendment? All the, all those in favor? Those opposed? And that carries six to four. I believe, well, we caught it on tape, so we'll, we'll get the four. Great. Any further discussion on the resolution as amended? Okay. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Nels. Thank you, Steve. I believe that brings us to five point five, maybe? I think it's five five, yeah.
Not the mural, the easement, right?
Yes, the easement, right.
Five five? An ordinance to release city easement across 401 East State Street. Whereas present before the council is a proposal requesting that the city release its rights to an easement running through the parcel known as 401 East State Street, recorded by deed and replacement of an existing storm drain. Easement, both encumbering the parcel now currently identified. And whereas McKinley Ithaca LLC, the contract purchaser of the property, and on behalf of GPA Management, the current property owner of 401 East State Street, has requested that the city release rights to a pedestrian easement extending from the most northeasterly point of the property to the northwest running along the property line, release a drainage easement with replacement and allow McKinley Ithaca LLC to place a shoring system for its construction and city property. Whereas city staff are supportive of releasing the easements in exchange for the replacement easements indicated in Exhibit A. And whereas in consideration for the city's release of the pedestrian easement, specifically McKinley Ithaca LLC, will complete the following site improvements that will benefit the city and the general public. Completion of the Six Mile Creek Trail and railing, approximately 300 feet to the end of the property. This will match the existing trail and be publicly accessible. Extension of the Six Mile will complete the following site improvements that will benefit the city and the general public. Completion of the Six Mile Creek Trail Enrailing, approximately 300 feet to the end of the property. This will match the existing trail and be publicly accessible. Extension of the Six Mile Creek Trail by approximately 150 feet into the city-owned property to the east of 401 East State Street. Site, provide a replacement pedestrian easement of approximately 160 feet, a pedestrian bridge open for public use across the retaining wall, and install stairs from the state street onto the project site below to connect to the Six Mile Creek Trail. Whereas the extinguishment of the easements was considered as part of the secret process for the negative declaration issued on May 25, 2021. Whereas the city charter requires approval by three-fourths of the common council to authorize divestment of real property. Whereas the city charter further requires notice of a proposed sale to be published no less than once each week for three weeks, that first notice being published no less than 30 days prior to the approval vote. And such notices have been published. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the common council of the city of Ithaca as follows, and a move is written.
Thank you. Second by Cynthia. Discussion? Or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? And that carries unanimously.
Five point six is a resolution to select artwork for a mural installation in the Dryden Road parking garage. Whereas in 2010, the Public Art Commission created a mural and street art program to beautify blank walls within the city while providing local artists from all sections of the community an opportunity to showcase their work. Whereas the Board of Public Works approved several locations for future murals and street art by resolution on May 19, 2010, and the city's Dryden Road parking garage was added to the list of approved locations by the board on July 14, 2014. Whereas Yurke Abuva submitted a proposal for a mural honoring all those who have lost their lives due to the COVID-19 pandemic as part of the city's mural and street art program. Whereas the artists will self-fund the mural installation, and the project will be budget-neutral to the city. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Ithaca Common Council selects Yurke Abuva's mural proposal to be installed on the Dryden Road parking garage to be added to the City of Ithaca's public art collection. Be it further resolved that the selected artist may proceed with the installation of the mural upon the execution of an agreement with the city as reviewed by the city attorney, and I so move.
Second by Steve Smith. Discussion?
And there is a mural description and the mural itself in the packet.
Thank you. Yes, Cynthia?
I love public art, and I'm so excited to see murals coming into city buildings and spaces. I am reluctant to have representations of individuals on government property who are not directly tied or represented from the community. And I'm also hesitant in terms of, you know, we have included in the record the description of individuals who may be Muslim, and if this would be the appropriate representation that they would choose for themselves and represented as a representation of their community.
Thank, sorry, Cynthia, did you?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that carries nine to one. Thank you very much. Seth, any update from, any other additional report from, oh, we also have the Sky Rider. I don't know if you want to?
Oh, was it, were we going to do that now? We could do it now.
I think so. I think that's next.
Sorry, it's, I kind of scrolled through a bunch of things here. Maybe, is Tom here?
I don't know if Tom is still here.
I'm sorry, it's like really buried in here, so I got to, okay, here it is. Seven point one. Whereas Plan Ithaca, the city's comprehensive plan, identifies public art as important cultural resource. Whereas the Community Arts Partnership and City of Ithaca Department of Planning have collaborated on the development of a public sculpture project, which is envisioned as a community-built kinetic sculpture utilizing reused materials. Whereas additional goals for the sculpture are that it appeal to an audience that is diverse, and that the artwork be fabricated to withstand the upstate New York weather, and that it spark joy in the viewer and express the artist's aesthetic sensibility. Whereas a committee was convened with, of community members with interest and experience in public art, and the committee was charged with selecting an artist and working with the artist on development of a design concept. Whereas a request for qualifications was issued, and eventually the project steering committee selected Patricia Vader from among numerous respondents as an artist with strong, relevant experience and excellent fit with the vision and goals for the project. Whereas the steering committee worked with the artist to develop a conceptual design. The project steering committee reviewed the city's list of nearly two dozen potential city-owned sites suitable for setting sculptures, evaluated those sites. Whereas the committee initially selected a preferred location for the sculpture in Cass Park. Whereas the city staff in Pruner solicited public input on this project location, and the commission also met to discuss the proposal at their June meeting, did not support this location, but suggested revisiting other possible locations, including the Black Diamond Trail Trailhead and a location on Inlet Island between Cliff Street and State Street known as Pete's Triangle. And either of these two sites had been evaluated and deemed suitable by city staff and the project steering committee. Whereas city staff had been consulted on the proposed locations and confirmed that a sculpture in the proposed areas would not impact any surrounding natural recreational features. Whereas already the sculpture is scheduled to be fabricated, installed in the late summer, fall 2021. And prior to installation, the project team will contract with a qualified engineer to design an appropriate footer. And whereas the project is funded by two private grants to the Community Arts Partnership and Center for Community Transportation, and no city funds are required to design, fabricate, or install the sculpture. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council accepts the proposal by Community Arts Partnership to create a sculpture for the city at the Black Diamond Trail Trailhead or Pete's, are we supposed to pick one of those?
You get to pick.
I'll just move Black Diamond Trail Trailhead, because that's the one I like, but we can have a debate about it. Black Diamond Trail Trailhead, and be it further resolved that the selected artist may proceed with the installation of the sculpture upon approval by common council, and the execution of agreement with the city as reviewed by a city attorney. I so move.
Thank you. Second by Steve. Discussion? I like that location too, by the way, Seth. That's the one I would address. Yes, Graham?
Yeah, I also think it's a more appropriate, and I also just wanted to thank everybody involved as liaison to Pruner Commission to have them give the input on this, I think was important in the whole process of thinking about where these are located. And I actually think this is a much more appropriate location for it. So I think this is a good process that we went through, even though it took longer than we expected.
Yeah, thank you. Duxton, then George?
I agree. So if you recall, we approved some, accepting some state money to build the trailhead at the Black Diamond Trail, and I took it this past weekend, and it looks like at least halfway done. So I think it's going to be a great complement, a great entryway to this amazing bike resource.
Yeah. George, and then Donna?
I have two questions. Did this go through the normal channels, or was this just something that a few people that like bicycles wanted to do?
So the, the normal channel under normal times would be to go through the Community Life Commission, which is not meeting. So instead, we brought this proposal to the Planning and Economic Development Committee. And they heard from members of Pruner and members of the public that they, you know, that they wanted to have some additional public input. And so the planning committee directed the folks working on the project, including myself, to bring it to Pruner for public discussion. We reached out to the public through the newspaper, through a notice, using the city's notice system, and had a comment form, and that information's in the memo, what the content of the comments was. Pruner then had a discussion about the comments and brought in their own views about it, which led us to say, you know, that's, there's not support, there's not overwhelming support, I guess. You know, there's some, some people clearly supported the location that was initially proposed, but others did not. Some people opposed the sculpture altogether. But among the folks that were opposed, there was certainly a large group of them that weren't opposed to the sculpture per se, but did not like that particular location in Cass Park. So Pruner then, you know, had a discussion, and there was, I think, a sense that those other locations were either acceptable or more supported than the Cass Park location. So the process absent the commission meeting is really to come to councils. And then we took council's direction about where to go from there and followed that direction.
Some of the older members of council might be able to help me with this, because I, of course, I don't know. But I'm worried about copyright, because wasn't there a song by some rock and roll group about riding a bicycle to heaven?
You can't ride it. The stairway is not suitable for bikes, if that's the only thing. Cynthia?
Yeah, thank you. I agree. I think this is a great location. I think it'll add vibrancy and engagement with the children's garden right across, as well as in support of the bike trail and kiosk there. I guess my one comment before we issue final approval is, I really applaud our efforts to bring in more art into the community. We have some great local artists. The fact that this work is commissioned and artist from California, you know, when we have incredible local talent here, you know, with COVID and everything, and everything being under wraps, this would have been an opportunity to keep that funds and support our community members. And I would like to see some focus directed at how can we reinforce and expand our local artist community, rather than issuing an RFP and going across the nation and supporting artists in far-flung locations.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Those opposed? And that carries eight to two. Thank you. Thank you, Tom, very much. Thank you, Seth, for, once again, Seth also runs a tight ship, which means the only leaky parts of the ship are the parts that I run. Which does bring us to, again, I'm hoping that we can skip over the, the executive sessions go straight to the appointments. Would anyone like to move the real appointments to Pruner, as well as the appointments to the Oversight Committee and the Examining Board of Electricians? Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Graham. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Are there reports of council liaisons? Yes, Duxton, then George?
Just, so Jennifer mentioned, Jennifer Dodson mentioned ongoing MOU discussions with Cornell. And we have for now agreed to extend the existing MOU, they're typically for three years. Extend the existing MOU for additional one year at a 3% increase, while very difficult negotiations continue. So, what to come on? There's a lot of discussion here. So Cornell wants a circulator on campus, for example, and they want it to be Cornell branded. And TCAT would prefer that it be TCAT branded. So there's a lot of stuff going on with that.
Thank you, Duxton. George?
Changed my mind.
Okay. Yes, Laura?
Thank you. There was a meeting today, this afternoon, of the IDA's Housing Committee. The purpose was to look at the workforce housing policy and to, we had a very good discussion on whether there should be changes made to the payment in lieu of requiring 20% affordable units in development project. And so those, the details will be shared with the full IDA board at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Is there a report of the city clerk?
I have no report.
I have one report about the city clerk, which is that she is the MVP of this meeting and maybe of the entire pandemic. Truly unbelievable. I mean, I think if you look at the pictures on the wall, you'll see that common council meetings have run more or less the same way for decades. Julie's figured out a way to adjust the way we do these meetings, like seven times in the last year. And one enormous time in literally the last 24 hours, as the mask guidance changed, moving to the social distancing, bringing people in in tiers, asking people to sign up in advance, getting the public comment to work on the screen, allowing for members of the staff to participate remotely. All stuff, again, was unthinkable a year ago, and she and her staff figured out a way to make it work.
And moving all the furniture around herself.
Yeah, moving like herself, which is just really.
And dealing with all the public's questions and concerns, complaints about the changes that are necessitated by the world we live in presently. So thank you, thank you, Julie.
Olympic gold medal for Julie.
Yes, that's her Olympic gold medal. Yes. Is there a report of city attorney?
Only report pertains to the, I guess, three different executive sessions that are pending. One to discuss labor contract negotiations, one to discuss the potential sale or acquisition of real estate that could affect the, substantially affect the value thereof, and actually a third brief one to discuss pending litigation.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't know what order you want those in.
I think we should do them in, just in that order. But I would actually ask, I suggested via email that we convene to the second floor. I'm wondering now if that's necessary. It seems like we already set up here, we've got the screen set up here. In case, though, I see our planning staff, was Tom going to join us via screen, do you know?
He was on his way here. I was sending him down to the second floor, so I can send him up. And I believe Shelley is also waiting in her office.
In her office, okay.
So just one nuance to make sure we think through before we choose a venue is that we will have to vote in public after one of these executive sessions on the labor contract that's been ratified by a union. So if we do it in here, we just need to figure out how we're going to make sure that it's a confidential conversation and then a public one again.
Yeah. So Julie, what are the, what's the possibility of turning off the microphones and the camera while we discuss and then turning back on?
We have Lauren in the meeting booth right now.
Great.
About putting us on pause, and then she can bring us back to vote for that, and then join us.
Awesome. Thank you, Seth. Thank you so much. I think that works, and I think there's actually more space up here too, which will help us, you know, maintain some distance.
All right. And I know Steve is working in his office, and I told him I'd let him know when we were going to the second floor conference room, so I will go work on that.
So save this opportunity to take a five-minute recess until 9:10, where we convene under executive session. Thank you.
Monks may be open. Oh, really? It's been a long week. Meetings every week.
Get a good time out here.
Yeah, it was a good two weeks away.
Any sharks?
No, but there were a lot more seals around than normal.
Seals are better than sharks. I saw a shark there last year.
Seals tend to attract sharks.
I saw a shark there last year.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It was pretty crazy.
Yeah, I was able to pretty disconnect pretty well. Mary Beth was working more.
Is it? Is it? Oh.
Great, so we are now, uh, we've now exited the executive session on a motion from Steve Smith and a second from Ducks and Win. All voted in favor to exit the executive session. We'll now, um, ask if anyone would like to move the resolutions.
I can do it.
Oh, thank you, Deb.
They are under city administration. If everyone is comfortable, we can move them as a, as a grouping. So essentially, this is a resolution to execute the CSEA administrative unit contract and authorization and approval of compensation for confidential employees not included in CSEA administrative contract.
Thank you. This is a second, second by Graham Kersleck. Uh, any discussion? I'll just add my, my thanks to the, uh, city's negotiating team led by Shelley, Michelle Nunn, Steve Thayer, and Ari Levine. And the negotiating team of CSEA Admin really put their heads together over many months, you know, and, and, uh, found a way to, to recognize the hardworking, uh, contributions of the CSEA unit and the financial constraints of the city. I think this is a contract that does both. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, is there a motion? Is there a motion? I'll now entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss contract negotiations, ongoing contract negotiations. And I'll just note that there will be no more voting items for the rest of this evening for members of the public who may be waiting for any, there's nothing to wait for anymore, so we can disconnect the broadcast. Thank you. Motion entered the executive session, moved by Steve, seconded by Rob. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously.